Good evening. Like to call the meeting to order. Start with our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Mr. Boykins to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. 1.3, Approval of Agenda. Move.
Second.
Move, and I have a second. Any proposed changes? It was moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Mr. Husky. Ms. Pressiato? Oh, she's not here. Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Villa Bosa?
Aye.
Ms. Husky?
Motion carried. 2.1, Resolution and Recognition of Patriot Day. Like to ask Mrs. Alexander to read that for us.
Whereas on September 11th, 2001, terrorists hijacked and crashed passenger planes into the World Trade Center, Twins Tower in New York City, and into the Pentagon, the U.S. Department of Defense Headquarters in Virginia, and into the field in Pennsylvania. 130 miles northwest of Washington, D.C., falling short of its intended target because of heroic efforts of passengers onboard. And whereas these attacks were by far the deadliest terrorist attacks ever launched against the United States, killing and injuring thousands of innocent people. And whereas the greatness of America shone brightly in the bravery of victims and heroism of the first responders who laid down their lives to save others and the compassion of people who stepped forward to help those they have never met and the generosity of millions of Americans who enriched our country with acts of service and kindness. And whereas by a joint resolution approved December 18th, 2001, the U.S. Congress designated September 11th of each year as Patriot Day. And whereas in proclaiming September 11th Patriot Day in 2003, President George W. Bush called upon government and all Americans to display the flag of half-staff on his day to observe a moment of silence in honor of the innocent victims who lost their lives. And whereas in 2009, President Barack Obama amended the Patriot Day Presidential Proclamation officially designating September 11th as the National Day of Service and Remembrance. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes September 11th, 2024, as Patriot Day and the National Day of Service and Remembrance, and encourages district staff, students, and families to join together in serving our communities and neighborhoods through good deeds that rekindle their extraordinary spirit of togetherness and compassion that arose in the immediate aftermath of the tragedy of September 11th, 2001. So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander and seconded by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
And Ms. Villa Bosa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 2.2. Like to have Mrs. Grande read that for us.
Whereas, 16 de septiembre, more commonly known as Mexico's Independence Day, commemorates the insurrection that led to Mexico's separation from Spain. And whereas, it is an important date in the history of Mexico that marks the anniversary of the issuance of the Grito de Dolores in which Father Miguel Hidalgo defied Spain and called for freedom and justice for the common man. And whereas, this date is of historical significance for the Mexican people and others of Latin American ancestry and is celebrated by many members of this community, including students of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes September 16th, 2024, 16 de septiembre, and directs appropriate activities for its subservents in district schools. Moved.
Moved by Mrs. Grande and seconded by Mr. Husky. Oh, you seconded it? Oh, Ms. Medina moved it, okay. Sorry about... Moved by Ms. Medina and seconded by Mr. Husky. Vote, please. Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Villa Bosa?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Mrs. Grande, I am disappointed. I had you read that because I couldn't pronounce the words properly.
Upper Plate, sir.
Motion carried. 2.3, Resolution and Recognition of California Native American Day. Like to ask Ms. Medina to read that for us.
Yes. Whereas California is currently home of the largest population of Native tribes and tribal people in the United States, including San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, also known as Ya Vitam Clan. And whereas California Native American Day began in 1939 when Governor Colbert Olson dedicated October the 1st as Indian Day. And then in 1968, California tribal leaders and Governor Ronald Reagan declared the 4th Friday of September as California Indian Day. And whereas Native American Day became an official holiday in public schools and community colleges in September 1998 under California Education Code when Assembly Bill 1953 was signed into law. And whereas educational leaders throughout the region are encouraged to involve themselves and their schools in a statewide focus on improving the education provided to our children and about the heritage, traditions, and resilience of California Native Americans and honor their contributions to the American tapestry. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino Unified School District declares September 27th, 2024, to the California Native American Day and encourages all educators to commemorate this day and appropriate... with appropriate instructional activities. And therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education will continue to support the academic success of the district's native scholars and educate the community about Native American culture through its Indian education program. So moved.
Moved by Ms. Medina and seconded by Dr. Wyatt.
Could we specifically, especially for... I mean, we should do this regardless, but specifically for September, do land acknowledgements before the board meeting starts?
I don't know what that is, but we'll look into it and... Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
And Ms. Villa Bosa?
Aye.
2.4, Resolution of High School Voter's Education Week. Like Mr. Husky to read that for us.
Whereas the right to vote is a fundamental underpinning of democracy and our constitutional republic, one that must be personally cherished, practiced, and championed as a civic duty. And whereas young people play a critical role in our constitutional republic by helping to choose the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on the issues that are important to them. And whereas by reaching out early and often to students, we can help them develop a strong and lasting appreciation for the value of voting. And whereas California Education Code designates the last two full weeks in both September and April to be high school voter education weeks. And whereas California has an online tool that allows eligible 16- and 17-year-olds to preregister to vote and automatically become active voters once they turn 18. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares the weeks of September 16th to 17th, 2024, and April 14th to 25, April 2025, as high school voter education weeks. And encourages district schools to participate in activities that help register and preregister eligible students to vote, while encouraging others to become informed citizens committed to being active voters once they reach voting age. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Husky, seconded by Mrs. Alexander. Vote, please. Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
And Ms. Villa Bosa?
Aye.
Motion carried. Section 3, Public Comments, 3.1. Receive public comments. This is a time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items now on the agenda and within their subject-mattered jurisdiction, such as district policy, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public comment comes from, I believe it was John Sisley?
Hello. Hi, my name is John Sisley. I represent all the union plumbers, pipe fitters, and refrigeration for San Bernardino Riverside Counties. I'm also a delegate to the Labor Council and the Building Trades Commission, State of California. I grew up in Rialto. I used to ride my bicycle to the Central City Mall and pick up on girls and watch movies. And I remember there was a guard here at the City Hall building, and he would take us on tours. Every hour, he'd take rounds of the building. He'd take us on tours. And I actually got to see city council chambers as a kid. And it's pretty inspirational to go through all that. Back then, San Bernardino was a pretty thriving place. So what happened here? You know, it's kind of complicated. We can talk about what happened at great length. But it's also kind of simple. We lost jobs. Jobs left the city really quick, and the city couldn't sustain it, right? So the answer to that problem is also jobs. I'd like to take a second to talk to you a little bit about community benefits agreements. Community benefit agreements put that money right back in your community. Unions hire locally, and we give that money right back to the community member that lives locally, that spends the money locally, that stays right here in San Bernardino. That's the answer to the problems we're having here, right? And that's the piece of the puzzle that's been missing all these years as we move forward in San Bernardino, right? We need agreements that say a developer can't come in here, take that money, go somewhere else, and leave us the way we're standing now, right? So those benefit agreements are very, very important. And I want to say that all the trades and all the building trades in this area are on board with helping you guys if we ever get to that point where we start talking about community benefits agreements, including bearing the burden of the cost of writing the agreement. That comes through building trades, and we do all that for you guys. So I just wanted to take a minute to talk to you and to get you to think about what the problem is here and what we can do to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Ramos?
Good evening. My name is Robert Ramos, and I belong to the Ironworkers Local 416 Reinforcement Local. I'm here as well to talk about the CBAs. But I'm going to give you a little background on how our trades, all trades, are good not only for the community, but economic growth, right? As a young kid, you know, coming out of high school, I knew I wasn't going to go to the higher learning college, right? That wasn't in me, right? But I got introduced to a trades, Rod Buster. As... I can't even say I'm not educated because I did get put into an apprenticeship program, a four-year program, right? That helped me develop my skills because I knew I was good with my hands, right? I knew I could... I had common sense, and they helped me develop that. They helped me grow, you know? You know, I wasn't meant to be a CEO, but it got me to where I am now. I'm actually a business agent for our local now, talking to you guys about community benefit agreements and the benefits that it's going to provide to the community, right? That being said, you know, we just got done passing out our Labor Council a Labor Love Project. You know, in the month of May, that's Labor History Month, right? We could actually introduce that to you guys and get the 11th and 12th graders get to know each and every single trade and let them pick what's good for them, right? I would say Rod Buster would be the way to go, right? But they got options, right? Each one of our crafts has a four- to five-year apprenticeship program, right? And that's a skill in itself where they're going to get a good, sustainable living wage, right? Here in the city of San Bernardino, they're going to have health benefits and retire with dignity, right? And once we sign these agreements, like my partner John said, we're going to hold contractors accountable for their actions. They're not just going to leave San Bernardino. The money's going to stay here, and that's what's going to stimulate the economic growth here in San Bernardino, right? So these benefits are important all the way around, right? For the community, for the worker itself, right? You know, most of my career, unfortunately, before we started doing these things, was in downtown L.A., right? I spent two and a half hours going to work, right? And then even more time. So I missed my kids' ballgames sometimes, right? I would have to schedule my days off when I had to go to parent conference meetings, things like that. So it's a benefit because now we're not going to have the parents too far away from their kids, right? They're going to be able to come home at a decent time, help them do their homework, and be more involved with their own family. And that's a big part. I mean, sometimes we just think about the financial gain, but if you think about the overall, that's a big win for the community. So this is why I hope that you guys come to us as a building council and help us and help you guys build this CBA that this San Bernardino really needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Terry Boykins?
Good evening, Boyd. My name is Terry Boykins, Executive Director of Project Finding Chance. And I want to get a chance to say thanks for having us here. Once again, back to school. We usually try to come back every back to school. We've been pretty busy. And, Mr. President, we had talked, I think, back in May about what we were getting ready to do in EXL and collaboration with regards to Project Finding Chance. And then Superintendent Marciano, we had talked about, when you were over at the gym with you and Dr. Rodriguez, about holding Project Finding Chance accountable in the community. We have created, without a question, some of the top amateur boxing champions in the United States. But that's not what we do. And what we did, Mr. President, we had a chance during the summer. We had boxing camp. And we reached out to individuals in this community. And because of EXL, a lot of the parents were able to have their children enrolled at Project Finding Chance because they saw the resource in the community that EXL had put forth. And 88 young people signed up for that two-week program. And that was very successful. Ian Franklin, the coach, was able to put some really good resources to work with youth, not only that wanted to be champions, but also that were dealing with trauma. And we had a chance to help both the parents as well as their children. In July, we continue that as the elite boxers were training and getting some things done with regards to competition for the summer. We had 146 of your students and local area students sign up for the July enrichment program. And I think Dr. Rodriguez had a chance to come by, as she often has done over the years in spending time, not just in and out. She actually spent times observing the program. 146 youth that were involved with Project Finding Chance original program, with STEM program, with boxing fitness, with yoga, with mental health walks, meditation, art, music. And that was really a significant time for us. Doctor... I mean, Pastor Laqueta Bush Simmons was really the architect of that. And I say that because oftentimes when you have this elite of a boxing program, we have the focus on those individuals. But the real champions were the ones that came into the program. And the parents saw us as a resource that they learned about in the school district and was able to really migrate their youth from June into July. And we were available to the community and student from 8:30 in the morning to 5:30 in the evening every day. And then the other boxers that were there, that were training, were there until 7:30. So we were open all July from 8:30 in the morning to 7:30 at night every day. And I share that with you because of what we've learned this summer was very significant. And a number of parents who have autistic children began to have conversations with us about some of the changes that their children were experiencing as a result of working with these coaches in the boxing and the fitness that began to see change. And that was because that they did not know that resource was available to them in the city until they had gone through EXL, come in contact with us, and then had a chance to see how we work with our coaches to help them work with youth with special needs. We've done that for a number of years. But this was a little different because these are some of the parents that are really at their wits' end. They have been pushed to the edge. And so making sure that our staff is trauma-informed, making sure that they have patience and have care. And I know when you're talking about with IEPs and some of the things you work with, we have, at Project Finding Chance, begin to really take this seriously about the role that we have in this community, not just producing champion and Olympic-bound champions, but individuals that can really put in work to work with the most needed child that needs attention, which is what we're going to do. And so when I said hold us accountable, continue to hold us accountable. We just won, of course, the blue and gold in Los Angeles. Matter of fact, Cajon High School, Stephen M., I cannot pronounce his last name, but he was recognized as the most outstanding boxer of the tournament. Cajon High School, we continue to put out that kind of athlete. But it's those champions that we actually get a chance to enjoy that comes into the gym that is really doing some magnificent things and us being able to work with their parents to make sure that Project Finding Chance is held accountable in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Romero?
Muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Solo vengo aquí para presentar al equipo de DILAC.
I'm just here to present the team.
Nuestro nuevo equipo porque como ustedes saben este año es nuevo.
Like you know, this year is new.
So quisiera que ellas mismas les den sus nombres.
I wish that they say their own names, they present themselves.
Hi, my name is Yolanda Quintero, Vice President this year of the DILAC, and glad to be here and support and be a part of this great team. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Consuela Aurora Rubio Mendoza. Soy secretaria del nuevo comité de DILAC y con toda la disposición para poder trabajar con ustedes, por los estudiantes, y este, para que obtengamos muy buenos resultados de aquí en adelante. Gracias.
From now and going forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Maricela Núñez, and I'm also part of the DILAC. I'm going to be doing the part of parliamentary and aboli, which is the difficult part, but I'm going to try to do my best.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Gusto de volverlos a ver. Mi nombre es Rodolflina Gaminos. Mejor conocida como Romeo Gaminos. Soy la consejera del comité DILAC y estoy muy contenta para volver a trabajar juntos. Gracias.
Good afternoon, my name is Rodolflina. I'm the counselor from the team, and I'm happy to be here working with you guys.
Y pues nada más este quiero reconocer a nuestros directores, al señor Acosta y le esta Ojeda, ya que ellos han sido muy buenos en este apoyarnos.
I would like to recognize the directors, Mr. Acosta and Ojeda, because they have been very helpful to us and supporting us.
Ya que ellos nos entienden mucho como padres y pues se ponen al nivel de nosotros para preguntarnos qué es lo que necesitamos y el apoyo que queremos para nosotros brindarles a ustedes o el distrito todo nuestro apoyo con el corazón que tenemos para nuestros estudiantes.
Because they come down to the... they get to the same level as us because they understand us, because they are parents as well, and they know what we need, they ask what we need. So we are able to help and work with the students and do the best we can for them.
Y también pues a la señorita Ana Poguay y la doctora Sandra Rodríguez, que también han sido muy buenos en apoyarnos.
And also, I believe she said Anna and Ms. Rodríguez, because they have been very helpful in supporting us as well.
Y pues nada más aquí estamos para servirles y pues apoyar en lo que se pueda, ya que muchos que me conocen han estado involucrado e involucrada en el distrito por mucho tiempo en voluntario y pues más que nada la pasión a ayudar y mi equipo es lo mismo que tenemos hoy.
And more than anything, I'm here at your service, and everybody that knows me knows very well that I've been involved with the district. I'm very passionate of helping the district, including myself and my team, of course.
Y pues esperamos de su apoyo también, que puedan venir a nuestras reuniones. La primera va a ser este viernes a las 9:30. Estudiantes, un bienvenidos. Los miembros del board también. Esperamos verlos allí, y si no, también por Zoom.
And also, I would like to have your support for our meetings. Our first meeting is this coming Friday at 9:30 a.m. Everybody's welcome, students. Everybody's welcome, students and the board as well. And if you can't make it in person, there's always Zoom.
Okay, mi equipo y yo venimos a sumar, no a restar. Entonces el mejor apoyo que se tenga es para eso, para sumar y ser mejor cada día, ya que en los años pasados he mirado cómo ha progresado el distrito.
My team and I are here to add, not to minus. I've seen how in the previous years the district has been better, so we're here. I'm hoping that I get everybody's support.
Muchas gracias y que tengan bonito día.
Thank you very much and have a lovely day.
Mrs. Romero is actually our new president. I don't know if she said that, but she is our new president. We're happy to have her.
And Ms. Romero, how many years have you been working with DILAC?
DILAC, I participated in DILAC like twenty-four years ago.
About that.
I know.
Thank you very much for your service. That's a long time.
Yes.
You have a whole lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will be at the meeting on Friday at nine-thirty. Thank you, Ms. Grande, appreciate that. I believe that is all of our public comments. And that takes us to Section Four, Public Hearing. Four point one, accepted to adoption of the MOU between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, Chapter one eighty-three. A public hearing will be held to consider the adoption of the memorandum of understanding between the California School Employees Association and the one eighty-three and the San Bernardino City Unified School District. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Are there any public comments for the public hearing?
There are none.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none. It is appropriate this time to do the resolution. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the memorandum of, we'll close the public hearing. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the memorandum of understanding between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, Chapter one eighty-three. A motion, please.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Husky and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion carried. We have one more public comment. Ms. Lewis?
Hi Danny, thank you, and good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Lewis. I am the current president of the Socialized Botillion Program. And I just wanted to stop by and say thank you for your support. Because of the financial support we received from the school board and others, we were able to award over seventy thousand dollars this year to our Botillion Knights. We have, I've spoke to Sandra Rodríguez, she may not remember me, we were at a parade, we talked. I know Danny Felicia Alexander is part of our, is one of our members, and Chief Polino's wife is our vice president. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for your support. Also, we've mailed letters to all of the high schools, some of the junior highs, asking them for participants. So if you can help us push that, that would be great. I'm sorry, I'm out of breath, I'm old. And help us get just young men to volunteer, want to participate in our program. We have a lot of mentorships. Again, Chief Polino is a mentor, Danny comes in, and Sir Knight last year, his name is Solomon Moore, he is now at Tennessee State. He is studying some biological engineering, I'm not for sure, but we have young men who want to succeed and come back to the community. And to say that, and I, this morning I saw him at the African American Support Network meeting, and the goal is to get our young men to go to college and to come back and stay within a community to help. So we all have the same goal, and I listen, everything's very positive. But again, I just want to say thank you for your financial support. Again, we have letters that have been mailed out to all the high schools and some of the junior highs, so if you can just make sure that the counselors, if they know any young men who they think could benefit from the program, or if they have any young man that will need extra help, send them our way. We start September fifteenth at the Community Developing Youth Center on Fifth Street, and our meetings are every Sunday from two to four. And I just want to again say thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, and thank you for your service. Y'all have been doing so much work for so long to help so many young men, it's just amazing. Young women too, that get involved in the program.
Yes, they do.
So I can't thank you enough. You know, with Ms. Beverly Lynn Jackson and Ms. Brown and a host of ladies that would have us at their house, I didn't know what I was doing at the time, didn't realize the impact they were making on me. Really my first formal introduction into politics, I didn't know at the time, but they had me go meet all the people who were who's who in this area when I was asking for ads. Didn't want to do it, I thought it was the worst thing in the world, didn't realize it was exposing me to people that would be helping me the rest of my life. So I can't thank you ladies enough, you do a wonderful job, so thank you. And I love that the district and the socialites have a partnership that we hope to continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One last thing, since you mentioned politics, our grand finale for our young men are not only the Botillion, but this year we were able to send them to overnight stay in Sacramento to the Capitol so they can experience that. So we're trying to do great things, we're trying to expose them to different things. And as Danny says, he's a product of the program, and I'm a product of San Bernardino. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of public comments, and we will go into closed session. Are there any closed session public comments, Ms. Cunningham?
There are none.
Thank you. Call the meeting back to order. Section six, action reported from closed session, six point one, approval of Assistant Director of Student Wellness and Support Services. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Mario Coranza, Assistant Director of Student Wellness and Support Services, school side affected date, work year, and salary to be returned, to be determined, funding, L zero two slash zero six three.
I move.
Second. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion carried.
All right, board, here in the HR division, we like to say we completed another successful recruitment. And at this time, I'd love to introduce to you Mr. Mario Coranza, who comes to us by way of Rialto Unified School District, now being appointed as SWITH's Assistant Director, twenty-six years of education experience. And as we reached out to his colleagues and those that he's worked alongside, a couple things stood out to us from them, is a builder of people, builder of relationships, understands the value of community, and working well with others. So board, I introduce to you at this time, another excellent leader for San Bernardino City Unified School District, Mr. Mario Coranza.
All right, I'll prepare a little speech here for you, okay? It's funny, I can do a song and dance in front of seven hundred kids and be comfortable, but in front of peers, I get a little nervous. So good evening, President Tillman, Board of Education, Superintendent Arayano, Cabinet and Viewing Audience. Dr. Funchess's introduction humbles me, and I gladly accept the Assistant Director of Student Wellness and Support Services position. The role represents a significant milestone in my twenty-six-year journey in education as a local student from Etowah to high school back in the, I'm not going to say the years, I'll give my age away, and educator here in San Bernardino County. I've been very fortunate to have a successful career, and I feel like the profession chose me to be a voice for and advocate for families and students that are not always heard. So they got me behind them to, you know, do what's right for them. I am fully committed to working collaboratively, learning continuously, and contributing my best to our collective vision. I understand the responsibility that comes with this position, and I'm prepared to approach every challenge with dedication and respect. I look forward to working alongside a talented and passionate team that I've heard great things about, and together we will achieve great things. Thank you for this trust, responsibility, and vote of confidence. I look forward to what we achieve together, and I am eager to get started to make a positive impact in our community. So thank you very much for this opportunity, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Coranza.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Six point two, expulsion of students, six. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel, based on a review of the panel's findings and facts and recommendations, and orders the expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below, in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with Education Code Section forty-eight, nine hundred, four-nine-five, six-six-five, four-five-one, four-zero-three. I'd like to entertain a motion. So move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion carried, six point three, students recommended for suspension or expulsion, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development, and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below, in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with Education Code Section four-eight-nine-zero-zero, four-eight-zero-nine-six-three, four-six-zero-seven-seven-two. Motion, please.
I move.
Second. Moved by Ms. Alexander and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion carried. Six point four, lift re-admit of expulsion of students. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the re-admission of the following students with identification numbers as listed below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with the Education Code Section forty-eight, nine hundred. Students.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Husky and second by Mrs. Sabios. Vote, please. Was it you? Ms. Alexander. Second by Ms. Alexander. Motion carried, six point five, petition to expel, rescind, sealing of record or modify youth court or expulsion. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes expulsion and youth court modification, expulsion or rescinding of the following students with identification number as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, in accordance with the board rules and regulations, and in compliance with Education Code forty-eight, nine hundred.
I move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Sabios and second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Motion carried, section seven, student board member, seven point one, reports and comments by student board members, Ms. Preciado.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, board members and audience. Happy to see you all. I am Jimena Preciado, and I'm currently a senior attending San Gregonio High School. Just here to give you guys a quick report. So first and foremost, I would like to express my gratitude for you all allowing me to have another year, another opportunity to echo the voices not only of San G, but for San Andreas High School. I'm looking forward to keep representing San Bernardino School Unified School District. So an important highlight for my school is the strong participation across grade levels and extracurriculars. We recently had Club Rush at San G, and students are actively involved in diverse programs such as speech and debate, Students for Change, Political Youth Forum. This broad engagement not only fosters individual growth, but it also demonstrates our school commitment to empower students to take initiative and to learn more about their passions. Another highlight is the bill that me and other students involved within ICUC have passed the educational board, which is IAV twenty-seven, twenty-four. This requires education for juniors and seniors to pre-register. Now this bill is at the Governor's Newsom's desk, and I'm waiting for it to be passed. Thank you for your active support, and hopefully Newsom will pass this bill. Another report for San Andreas is the blood drive happened on August twenty-eighth. They constantly have their Fun Fridays, which allows active engagement for the students. And their free vision event is tomorrow. And for SLAC, we're going to have SLAC on September ninth, I believe. All in all, these are a couple updates for the start of the new year. I am looking forward to keep making positive impacts and being an effective student advocate. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rosenbloom?
Good evening, gentlemen or ladies and gentlemen. I'm a senior at Pacific High School. And some of the updates at Pacific is that during back during back-to-school night, we had a ribbon, a ribbon-cutting ceremony to announce our community school's grant. County Supervisor Joe Baca Junior came to speak to our community, and I got to cut the ribbon. A blood drive will be held tomorrow, September twenty-first, tomorrow, September fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Pirates, Pirate students invite any, any district employees to come between eight-thirty and one o'clock to donate blood to save lives. On September fifth, our principal is hosting a representative from all clubs and students organizations to meet with her for the, for the principal's student advisory. This group will be held for four times a month. And on September fifth, our seniors will have, will be able to participate in the traditional senior sunrise early in the morning and our final, for our final years as Pirates. We can, we're, will conclude our senior year with a sunset. And on September twenty-seventh is a fall homecoming rally, and our homecoming dance is September twenty-eighth. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Villabosa.
Good evening, my name is Sasha Villabosa, I'm a senior at Middle College High School, and I will be representing Middle College and Sierra High School. I wanted to begin by giving my gratitude to all the staff for doing their absolute best in supporting their students. I wanted to continue by stating that an alumni from Middle College High School has created beautiful mock-up designs of Middle College High School mural designs to enhance school spirit and pride. Last Friday, we had Spirit Week and Club Rush. Throughout that week, I've seen so much school spirit from students than ever before. Being able to show others who we are from murals not only shows who we are, but also expresses our school spirit. So with all of this, Middle College is seeking your support with this project. At Sierra High School, as the school year continues, I look forward to building relationships so I can further represent them. Indian Springs High School is excited for Club Rush as well, and their football game coming up this week. Overall, I just wanted to give my thanks for all the support that we've received from you guys, thank you.
Thank you very much. Eight point one, School Board appointment of the Personnel Commission. The term of Michael Salazar, the board's appointee to the Personnel Commission expires on December 1st, 2024, pursuant to Education Code 45246B1. The governing board shall publicly announce the name of the person it intends to appoint or reappoint. It is the intent of the Board of Education to reappoint Michael Salazar for a three-year term at its October 22nd, 2024 board meeting. At that time, the board will conduct a public hearing. Following any public comments, the board will take action on the appointment. Any questions, concerns? Thank you. Eight point two, Administrative Presentation, Link Learning Pathways. Ms. Anna Applegate, Assistant Superintendent Educative Services, provide an update on the Link Learning Pathways.
Thank you, President Tillman, and at this time, Board, I would like to present our Director of Secondary, Dr. Suda Venkatesan. She will be giving an update on our pathways and highlighting some of the great work that's been done by her team we have here as well. So, Dr. Venkatesan.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Tillman, Superintendent Ariano, Board, Cabinet Members, Parents and Community. My name is Suda Venkatesan, and I'm the Director for Secondary Education and College and Career. Next slide, please. Today's presentation is a brief overview of pathways at San Bernardino City Unified School District. Our goal, silver-certified pathways, benefits of being in pathways, and on how parents and students can get more information on pathways and also in enrolling them. Next. This data in last year's, as we are still leveling classes this year. We have a total of 54 pathways, representing 12 California industry sectors. We have 7,401 out of 11,871 high school students that are enrolled in a pathway. That's around 62% of our high school students. 100% of our pathways are A through G approved. A total of 2,528 industry certifications were earned, and 479 internships done just in last year. 3,090 college courses were completed by our high school students at the last count. When we did a simple math, it equated to $1.9 million in college credit savings for SBCUSD families and students. This is just one-year saving. Transcripts are still coming in as we speak for the spring semester. And we are looking at doubling these numbers, as well as the savings for our students. All these credits have been earned for free just in one year. Next, please. This year, we have 13 industry sectors, represented by our pathway. Marketing, sales and service is the extra addition at Indian Springs. As you can see, we have transportation, arts and media, building and construction, and so on. The numbers and front of the industry sector is the number of pathways represented in each of these sectors. The schools which house these pathways are listed in parentheses below the industry sector name. Every high school provides pathways, and we have one linked learning pathway at Curtis Middle School. And I want to call your attention to the last presentation we did in May, where we had a pie graph that closely aligned to the prospective job openings in San Bernardino County to our pathways. Our pathways continue to serve as a strong preparation ground for the jobs in our community. Next slide. What you see in this slide are the gold-certified pathways. Pathways that are gold-certified represents the highest quality and standards for link learning. They go through a rigorous certification process by the Link Learning Alliance. There are over 900 school districts in California, and only seven districts have gone through this gold certification work to be accredited. And we have eight such gold pathways. We have 21, next please. We have 21 silver-certified pathways, and a large number of these pathways are exploring, going for gold certification. To that end, our department is hosting a series of workshops to prepare them to enter the gold certification process. Next. This is a signature piece for San Bernardino City Unified. Every pathway that is in our district should have the components that consists of program of study, post-secondary connections, industry certification, college options, industry partnership, and work-based learning experience to truly serve our students at the highest level. Students need a minimum of two years and at least 300 hours to be considered pathway completers. Next. What are the benefits of being in these purposeful pathways? Pathways help students earn A through G credits, sometimes for core subjects, sometimes for electives. As I had previously mentioned, 100% of our pathway courses are all A through G approved in one of the seven A through G categories. Pathways help students enroll into a dual enrollment program at a community college, also do an articulated course that gets college credit, but it is taught by the high school teacher. Students also enroll into industry certification courses in the community colleges. In the previous slide, you saw that our students earned 2,528 certifications just in last year. And there are also several scholarship opportunities that are offered by Link Learning Alliance, and also through some industry sectors. We have hundreds of industry partners that have helped us provide exposure to local industry connections, to do job shadows, as well as connect students with local experts. Internships, pre-apprenticeships, opportunities are increasing for our students year after year. We are currently working with trade union and the county office of ed to pursue approved pre-apprenticeships in building and construction, mechatronics, automotive, and just recently culinary. Early childhood will be announced very soon. Next, please. So how do we apply to these SBCUSD pathways? I want to ensure that I provide accurate information to our students and parents on how to apply to enter a pathway, and what to do if they want to join another high school for a specific pathway. Any student can request to enroll in any pathway at any traditional site. Any student can request a school transfer for a specific pathway, even if it is not their homeschool, using the SBCUSD change-of-school process, but it will be based on the seat availability. The only person enrolling a student into a pathway is the high school counselor. But there are many staff that can help educate students and parents on pathway options available. We have two important staff at each and every high school that are very closely connected to this pathway. They are our linked learning program specialists, which Board, you know, you approved for every high school to have a linked learning specialist, and also the college and career readiness teachers. If you cannot reach out to your counselor, this is for the students and parents, please reach out to the linked learning program specialist and the college and career readiness teachers. They will help you to connect with the counselors regarding the pathway. If you are at a middle school, you should be getting high school tours and pathway showcases. And if you are an eighth grader and is interested in a specific pathway, please reach out to your middle school counselor, who will help you connect with the pathways and the concerned high schools. We are working on increasing our elementary school tours and showcases to improve and provide more awareness. Next, please. And what can parents, where can parents and students find more information? As I mentioned, two people you cannot forget beyond your counselor are the linked learning program specialist and the college and career readiness teacher. Okay, in short, they are called LLPS, CCRTs. Please reach out to our office, our contact number is 909-473-2084. We have tons of information about pathways in our high school websites. I highly encourage you to go to individual high school website to learn more about their pathways. Or you can also access Secondary Education College and Career website that will provide links to all the schools just in one spot. And I sincerely hope that you access one of these many resources to know more about and to enroll in pathways. As always, thank you for the opportunity to share all this information with students, parents and the community. I just quickly want, if David can, click on that website link. So we just clicked on the secondary ed website link, and this takes you here. And click on the Link Learning Academies and Pathways. Now you keep scrolling. You have, keep going. You can see all the schools are linked under this. So let's say, click on Arroyo Valley. You see that Arroyo Valley has that banner, and then you you can't see that in the black, but under the banner, you have also the linked learning program specialist person's phone number directly linked. Oh, you can see that here. There's a contact information, so that is the person that you would call if you can't reach your counselor, or you can't get the counselors, you know, scheduled at the time you want to really talk about pathways. Go for one more school. Let's click on another one. Yeah, go to Sanji. Okay, so Pacific. You see that banner of the school with their school colors, and you have the name of the linked learning specialist there. And if you click on that banner, click on the banner, please. That will take you directly to the school website. So this is one place. I would really ask that the parents and students reach out and click on this. You will be taken to all different websites and the contact numbers. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, any questions? First, we'll start with Ms. Medina.
First of all, thank you so much for this presentation, I think it's really important, not just for us board members, but for those that are watching, seeing all the many great things that we're doing, and the opportunities we provide for our students, not just in elementary, I mean, high school, but also bringing education towards the middle school and elementary school. So with my question with regards to middle school students, when you, when I see it, I think it's one of the pages that shows currently in middle school, and then they reach out to eighth grade, eighth grade counselors that provide registration information. How are all students, so how does that work? Does it, you know, all students at least meet once with the counselor to talk about what are their ideas of what type of school they want to go, what type of pathway they want to go to? Because not all the school sites offer the pathways, so they, let's just say they go to San Andreas High School, and that's their homeschool, but yet Cajon offers a different program that they're interested in applying, and they're in eighth grade. How would that, what would that look like? And is this all students in eighth grade that get to try to figure out their plan?
Oh, those are great questions. Usually towards the end in spring semester, high school counselors, they go and visit their feeder schools. And they introduce the pathways, and you know, the linked learning program specialists also go with them, and they talk about the pathways that are existing in their high schools. If the student comes to know that after researching, they come to know, no, this is not the pathway that my homeschool that is offering I'm interested in. I want, let's say the student has to go to Sanji, right? The student would think, no, I want to go to San Bernardino High School because there's a pathway there that interests me. Then the student can apply the change-of-school process. And then if there are enough seats available in that pathway, then it is again the enrollment office they have to get in touch with in order to do that. Just like applying for a change of school.
With that, then all students, so there's not necessarily where all students are meeting with the counselor to talk about the pathways. It's more or less the high school, they come to the middle school to talk about their pathways, and if a student decides they want to, then they do the research.
They usually have a registration form, and they ask for the interest of the students. And then if the student wants something very specific or needs more information, they can reach out to the middle school counselors and say, I want, how can I get more information on this? I'm interested in this. And then the middle school counselor will help make that connection happen.
Okay.
Or the student can reach out, get on the secondary website, go to that specific school, and I have the number right there. They can call that, and they can directly talk to. There's, just because you're a middle school student, that doesn't stop you from reaching to the high school and preparing for your future.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that for students that don't, maybe in their household environment, their parents don't really, you know, ask them the questions, and the student don't really ask the questions. And so I think maybe just looking at how our counselors are asking those questions of them, because that environment at home may not necessarily, they probably don't even think of, what kind of questions am I going to even ask? Or, oh, I like this, but okay, then I guess.
What can I do?
Yeah, so I'm thinking maybe counselors can also help with that process of really talking to students and figuring out what their pathways would look like or their interests. And then I guess the second question would be with, are there pathways that have low attendance? And/or low registration, and how are we either encouraging students to apply, or marketing, or trying to show, okay, we need to fill these? Or maybe really looking at it, is it even relevant anymore? Maybe it's a decline because students are no longer interested in those pathways? Or it doesn't pay, I don't know.
No, we are looking at all those numbers, we want to make sure that all these classes are fully utilized. We don't want to run pathways with 10 and 11 students when you know that it is not going to be like, you know, we are not getting full leverage out of it. That is the audit that the Link Learning Alliance has actually done for us, and we will be coming out with you with all those recommendations.
Thank you so much.
Just to clarify, the district can't afford to have a lot of classes with just 10 students in it. I said the district can't afford to have a lot of classrooms with only 10 students in them.
Can or cannot?
Cannot.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
But in some pathways, because of the safety, there may be, like, this pathway can only hold 18 because there's a lot of heavy machinery or equipment involved. Only those things we are really making sure. And we are crucially looking at pathways that are low enrollment.
I only say it because there's a reason why we have certain number of students in classes, and we get funded by the state at a certain level.
Correct.
So even though it may be a great thing, we can't afford a whole lot of classes that don't have, you know, a certain number of students.
Yes.
Mrs. Alexander.
Thank you, I would like to first say thank you for coming out today. I know that you are slated to be here in April to report out just the accomplishments of the linked learning program and the pathways and what we're doing there. So thank you to your staff for being here. A few questions, so in relation to how to apply, supporting with Board Member Rosal supporting with board member Rosales Medina Medina brought up. Just making sure that we're clear that the counselors do help the students, correct?
Yes.
They sit down with them.
They are the ones that enroll the students.
Right.
Counselors do a lot of help with pathways.
And then in reference to that, if a student sees that they want to be a part of a pathway that's at a different school, what is the actual process once school has started? Can they still look at that program and then they consider, they can be considered for that program, maybe the next semester? How does that work?
The one thing I, it is. I, I want, I would want to say that whatever pathway you're interested in another school, if it is not your home school, you have to go through the change of process.
Okay.
So if I'm on top of my head, I do not know what is the timeline for the change of process, but you have to abide by the change of process. You can change, provided that school has to have seat availability too. So those are the only two conditions that have to be met. Pathways itself, we don't have anything, any qualifying thing that a student can be in the pathway only if we don't have any qualifying things like that. Any student can go into any pathway.
Then the sixty-two percent of our population, is there a goal for this year to increase it come next year? How are we tracking according to your goal?
As Mr. Tillman mentioned, we always want to fill these pathways. So we want to make sure that there are more students. That's why we are watching what are the pathways that get easily filled up and what are the pathways that are struggling to fill up. And then that's going to be our conversation next on why, whether it is the interest of the students, we don't have interest of the students to be in the path, part of the pathway. We want to explore what are the reasons for it and then come and make a recommendation to the cabinet and superintendent.
Awesome. And then lastly, a lot of students are graduating with certifications and there are certain disciplines. Are we tracking how we're doing with that in terms of once they're have completed the pathways and they've graduated, how they're actually going into either their field of study or prepared to go into their field of study?
It's easier for us to track the field of study because we can get, you know, data for that. If the students enroll into a two-year college or four-year college and remember last, last presentation, I was mentioning that, you know, it is difficult to track if the students are not, let's say they are taking an alternate path. So I want to go into workforce, you know, then it may, it's not totally possible for us at this point of time. We are still like, you know, putting our heads together to see what kind of a thing, a data bank that we can use in order to just track if the students are going into workforce right away. The one thing that I'm feeling very hopeful is about these apprenticeship opportunities that that should be easier for us to track. Because the pre-apprenticeship, apprenticeship starts at the twelfth grade level. And then we know that there are certain number of students that are going to get into these apprenticeships at high school, beyond high school.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Grande.
Thank you for that amazing presentation. I just feel so proud of us all and especially your area. You, I just, it's just like a dream come true from twenty years ago. It's like, gosh, you know, no choices. But here I, I see though is that there's almost too many. If I remember, I have a hard time deciding. And so two things, I wonder if the students get some kind of assessment, self-assessment tool that they can say, I took one myself in a community college, which told me that I would make a really good museum director and a teacher. But absolutely never secretary, which is what I was going to school for at the time. So that's a long story.
Students do have an interest survey that they fill up and we do have that available for students.
And what happens when they want to do both college and career?
This is preparing them for college and career because most of them are A through G. And then it also gives them, remember these pathways are all connected to dual enrollment programs.
Yes.
So many of our students, I, I think I probably in a, in a year, I can come back and speak to you about the extent of the dual enrollment program options that we have. I mean, it's amazing to see how much we have expanded on that. So students are already having graduating high school with twelve credits and fifteen credits. You know, it's become a norm right now for us.
So they don't have to choose between college.
Yes, they don't have to. So we prepare them for both and then it is finally their option, what they want to choose.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I don't think Mrs. Grande was talking about a survey. I think you met, there was a tool where you can.
Like a what color is your parachute type of tool?
Right, but the military does it too, right?
It's an interest inventory. We do that. Yes, we do that.
And they tell you what your skill set matches?
It, it also tells you what components are in the career that you're deciding on. It, it tells you like, are you happier working with a team? Are you happy, more happy, happier working by yourself?
Is that the survey you're talking about?
It's a, it's a strength finder. It has all components of it.
Okay, alright.
I can actually give you a sample of that. We have many software programs that our college and career teachers use too. I can get you a sample of the inventory.
And what percentage of our students are able to access those? Do you know?
Everyone, everyone actually takes it.
Okay.
All the students.
Thank you. Ms. Husky.
Sorry, I couldn't find my button. I just had a question, a follow-up on the RCS and the, the, how many are enrolled? Are we also looking at like how many students request to go to a pathway through the RCS process? But aren't able to get in because they don't have a seat. So let's just say there's at school A. You know, there's a pathway that they want and they're at school B, but there's no seat. So we have kids that are requesting a pathway but can't get to it because they're not at, at that school.
I can definitely talk to Mr. Buckner and I can get back to you on that.
I just before we, I, I just would think as part of, do we have enough people asking, you know, in that pathway? Are there people who are asking for that pathway but can't access it because there's no seat?
I can, I can find out. If I, I can talk to all the linked learning program specialists to see when any pathway is in full capacity that they cannot accept any students from other schools. I can, I can ask, I can find that information.
Let me, let me follow up that because that brought a different. So I thought the seat availability was like for the school. So I know when
That too.
Back in the day, when I was in an apartment that was handling RCS. You know, if there was, if they were at capacity at grade level, you couldn't transfer into the school.
Yeah.
So wasn't capacity to the pathway, so it's capacity to the pathway and capacity to the school?
Well, if I, I don't want to speak to it before, until I know all the information. It should be, at the end of the day, the school, the student becomes part of the school too. So I would assume that, you know.
That is correct. It is also capacity of the school.
Yeah, so.
Not, not, it's nothing that has to be, but maybe when.
So I don't have expertise in that area.
Yeah, that's right. When we, when you come back in the spring for the big presentation. Because I know Mr. Tillman asked about what pathways are low enrollment.
Correct.
My question is, a pathway has ten kids in it. But there are eight kids at other high schools trying to get into that pathway that couldn't get in because there was no space at the school site.
Okay.
Right? So it's not that, it may not be that there's not an interest, it's that we, it's not, yeah, so.
I get your point.
I know Dr. Rodriguez or Ms. Applegate can answer that question now. Go ahead.
Correct. At this time, we don't have any waiting lists for students who are trying to transfer into another school for a particular pathway. We do have impacted school of Cajon, which is perpetually a, a destination school. But you are correct, the, the school needs to have room for students in the grade level so that they can take their English, math, et cetera. And then the pathway may be a little different in the sense that there may be space in the pathway, but not space in the grade level because the elective's not our, not our, not always grade level specific.
So understanding that, I, I just don't know that, I would like to know, or if we don't, that we do on the RCS indicate that they're trying to go to Cajon, let's say, for the theater arts pathway, right?
Understood. So you want some kind of a mechanism where if they're not at the home school, they would be able to request it at any other school?
That's what I heard in the beginning of the presentation is that they can request to, they can do an RCS for a pathway. But do we ask that on the RCS, I'm, I'm, I want to go to Cajon because they have the theater arts pathway, like for example?
I can, I'll, I can answer that. So on the RCS, there is a section that says reason for request to transfer. In that space, the parent can add a narrative as far as why they want to move. There is not a specific checkbox that says I'm going for a pathway. It's more of a generic space for them to list the reasons why they would like the transfer.
Even though that's what they want, they may or may not list it because I know what, I, I've read lots of those in, in things. So they may or may not list the pathway, not realizing that that's an avenue or a reason for a request for change of transfer. So maybe we might want to look at that moving forward that, that, you know, are you requesting for a pathway or what pathway are you interested at the school so that we can collect that data? Because what, what I don't want is, you know, we close, let's, let's say we close a pathway because we say there's no kids. But there were kids at other schools that wanted them, but we don't know that they wanted them, right? That we could have, we did actually have the interest in the pathway. So I just want to make sure that we have the data before we as a board say, yeah, we, we need to close some of these pathways. That's what I'm looking.
And we have the model for that. We, we prioritize some transfers just for certain programs. IB being one of them, right? So if you want to be in the IB program, then you could get, you might get in to Cajon rather than somebody who's not requesting access because of IB and qualifies, right? So we have those type of things set up. It sounds like we want to find ways to integrate that the pathways into something similar to that. It'd have to be manageable though. We talk about this many pathways, right?
Right, but we don't know because we're not collecting data on kids who are requesting for, we don't know who's requesting for a pathway necessarily.
They hear the ask.
And so, and the narrative is hard to collect data out of, right?
We can take that into consideration. We do have, they're inputted into a spreadsheet so that we know what's the reason for the transfer. But we can definitely consider putting that information on the transfer form.
To my student board members, do you, any of you have experience seeing the pathways offered to you at different schools and do you, do you know of a way from, just from your perspective as a student, do you have the confidence to say, if I wanted to be in this pathway, I would know how to apply?
Well, I, I did have an application for Serrano and it, and it did give me a list. I, I at first did want to do the project lead the way, which is biomedical field. But then I did wish that there was business and there's a lot of other students that wish that there was business. But I unfortunately, once I was already in that past pathway in my sophomore year, I didn't, I, I didn't know that other schools had business and unfortunately that kind of like limited me. And I didn't know who else to reach out with. So thank you for the presentation. Another issue that I'm kind of seeing is that I've been in this pathway for four years. This is my fourth year. So the first two years, we had a relative amount of like twenty-eight, twenty students, but now there's only about ten, ten, twelve students now.
What pathway is this?
Biomedical, project lead the way.
Did you, are you going to get any hyper certificate?
Yeah, so the three years you get a SASH and then four years you get a medal.
Thank you.
And you also become a CCI completer. You're a completer.
Thank you. Ms. Medina.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that and I, and I appreciate Ms. Husky's request or at least looking into the, just looking at the data, even if we don't do anything specifically right now, but even having a check mark, a checkbox for those different pathways, if that's the interest, so that way we can kind of monitor what's really going on. Like Dr. Mr. Tillman mentioned with the IB program, we're doing that. I do recommend that we move to doing that, even if it's just to collect and really analyze what's going on. Because once we start looking at site, certain pathways that are in decline, we're not just making assumptions. We want to find out, is this because there isn't that information from students from one school that didn't even know that there was a program at another site? So we want to make sure that we're kind of getting accurate information.
And let me ask you, just because Ms. Preciado mentioned that a lot of students wanted business but didn't have access to business. Is there any way we would know that, that there, there was a demand for a certain pathway?
We can look at the enrollment and see which one of these pathways have high, we, we have the data. I didn't bring the data with me today. But we, one of the things that we do is always go and collect. And again, it is, it requires, there's a teacher associated with every one of these pathways and, you know, some pathways started with very high enrollment. Those are the hard questions we are now asking. What is your fire plan? How do you sustain these pathways? Like, you know, how are you increasing in student enrollment? These are some of the questions that when the linked learning program specialists come, come to our meetings, these are the things that we are talking to the principals and talking to the specialists. We want to make sure that it's fully utilized.
Right, and let me say this, I, I want to be practical, right?
Correct.
Because it may be the trend that, like Ms. Preciado said, you know, they started with thirty. But if it's normal that you get fallout over the years and then last year you ended with ten, then that's a problem. Because then it's, it's sustainable to have all these pathways.
Correct.
And in the last year, you only have ten students in it. You know, the, the, the state is experiencing tougher financial times. And I'm telling you, it's going to come real quick where we're going to be saying, what can we afford to keep? And so classrooms with just small numbers of students, we, we can't do it, not because it's not good for the students, but we can't financially afford it. Right? The state funds you thinking you're going to have twenty-five kids in each class. They, they're not funding enough money to have classrooms with ten students in it. So that's just something to be cognizant of. We got to find a way to deal with it in a practical way. Because you're right, all the students aren't going to stay in it. And as Ms. Preciado says, some may want to switch to a different pathway. So all that can be involved. I, I really don't want to lose sight of the fact that pathways is, is one of the extra things we're doing in the schools to prepare our students. But we have to make sure we can afford the way that we're delivering the product.
Thank you for saying this because when I, when college and career was came under secondary, that was my first order of action. I took the pathways and I did all the student numbers. Year after year, we have been following up. That resulted when Mrs. Applegate and I talked about, we said, let's do a master schedule audit now. We need to really get to the bottom of this and I understood, and we need to understand why, you know, the numbers are all, all over the place. And we did the master schedule audit. And then we looked at all those classes that are less than fifteen or twenty, then there is a problem. Right? So we also have the middle school and then we have to come out with a very comprehensive idea of what are we going to do with pathways that have low enrollment? Either we attract students from other schools in order to make it like, you know, feasible for us, fiscally feasible for us to run these programs. Or what does he alternate? It's something definitely we are asking those questions to the school sites, to the principals, as well as to ourselves.
Okay, and then I think it's, Ms. Blais.
Well, thank you, thank you so much for the presentation. Just one follow-up question that kind of came to mind as, as the conversation was flowing. Do we have any data on why students are dropping specific pathways? So is there a way that we have to collect information? Kind of like an exit interview, you know, if a student is enrolled in a certain pathway, you know, before dropping the class altogether. Granted that they didn't leave the district, right? But, you know, if they just wanted to drop it for whatever reason, you know, is there a way for us to collect like information as to, hey, why are you deciding to, you know, leave this particular pathway? Are we collecting any kind of data like that?
I really don't have an answer to your question for now. I can definitely go back and talk to the principals and collect that information. And if the students are dropping out of the pathway, I can definitely collect the information on why they are doing it.
Okay.
We will get the data.
And if we're not, I would recommend that we do, just again, for the purpose of, purposes of collecting data, because when it does come, you know, that point where we're going to have to make decisions that we are able to, you know, understand and.
Probably the counselors already know because they are the ones that do the change of programs for them. So we can send out an email and, you know, ask them to keep a tally of these things from now on. We can totally do that.
And, and I really think it's unrealistic to think that all the ninth graders that start in a pathway are going to be in that pathway as a senior. That's not going to happen. When I went to the school, I took auto shop and there were a few of us that loved auto shop. So we stayed with it every year, but that wasn't a norm. Some people took auto shop and realized this is not for me or I got enough out of it. I learned to do my brakes, but I'm not going to, I don't want to do auto shop every year for four years. I think pathways is going to be the same. I think pathways is going to be the same way. Some students are going to love it and want to continue it. Others aren't. And so if it's, if we if we see statistically that we have a drop by certain percentages, then we need to plan for that. And then maybe the, if a lot of them at senior year don't have a lot of students, then we do something other than a class.
I will definitely, we already collect this data every year. I'll collect the class sizes for ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade and twelfth grade in different pathways at different schools. And then we can closely look at what classes are like, you know, very low enrollment. And then I'll give the information to Mr. Superintendent and the Cabinet and.
Sounds good. Ms. Alexander.
And board member Preciado is before me. She had her light on before me.
Sorry.
You can go, I'll go too, I'll get her.
Okay. Sorry. So I just have one question regarding KPIs and something to consider for April. And also for us to know, just for equity in in general, just so we know how we're impacting all the population of our our school districts. So ensuring that in these pathways that ethnicity, the ethnic breakdown, but also making sure from a special education perspective that, you know, we are covering all the different categories within our school district.
I'll bring the data.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Preciado.
And to kind of question you about the data. When I was a sophomore, nobody had asked me, right, if I wanted to kind of, if I was interested in business. So my suggestion is, I think you guys, if people, you know, while they're in their pathways, they might be asking themselves, well, is this right for me? Or I don't like this. So I think that you guys should continue doing the surveys even up until high school to say, hey, these are the other options if this is not what you like. And also to answer Ms. Sivios' question, uh, well, for specifically for Project Lead the Way. I don't know for the other pathways, but many of them just did it until junior year, just simply to get the certification and the SASH. But nobody wanted to do it the senior year. That's why we have relatively like ten students in my classroom.
So is it because lack of interest or what do you think?
Lack of interest.
You got the SASH.
They have, they have a SASH for dual enrollment too now.
I would like for you to introduce your team. I noticed, I talked to someone on the way in tonight. I know someone in the audience, so you want to introduce your team to us, your team?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
You know, I really want to thank my team. But for them, we wouldn't have moved on many of these things in a very cohesive way. And I, at this point, I have the director teams here first. And then all the college and career and services.
Would you please stand?
I have an amazing team, thank you.
That's Dr. Ellen Kay and our coordinator, Ms. Chelsea Ramirez. Thank you, and her program specialist, introduce yourself. Thank you, they have done fantastic work. I just want to say thank you to the team. We took all over sixty pathways that were all over the place. And you guys did some fantastic legwork with facilities, with fiscal, to try to get them to be high quality pathways. Thank you for the suggestions. We will absolutely take those because we want to get better each and every time, so thank you.
I heard two of the names in the microphone. Can you say the other two names?
Becky Huff. And Kim Laurie, our program specialist in college and career.
We still have one Laura Smith, who is not here today with us.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation. Eight point three, administrative presentation, multilingual program updates. Mrs. Anna Applegate, Assistant Superintendent Education Services, provide updates on the multilingual programs.
Thank you, President Tillman.
And it was like the last one, she has somebody else do it for her.
No, this one I'm actually going to participate in. This is near and dear to my heart. They all are, but you know, multilingual. But anyways, what I want to do tonight, board, is we want to provide an update on several items that affect our English learners and several programs that we're in right now. One of the main things we wanted to do is to bring you an update of the Department of Justice settlement. I brought you the Department of Justice settlement last year. I specifically showed you what they were asking. So we'll go over that and where we are with being compliant and more in that area. Next slide, please. We'll give a little preview of the, the ALPAC, I'm sorry, a review of the ALPAC because we can't share the current data with you yet, it's still embargoed. We'll talk a little bit about our reclassification process and how we're doing there. We'll bring you our numbers with CIL by Literacy, which we're extremely proud of because we have a county high this year and that's fantastic. They've done a great job with that. We'll talk a little bit about the expansion of our multilingual programs because this district has been so committed, our board has been so proactive and so supportive that we've been able to have probably the most bilingual programs or dual immersion programs in the state. We're one of the districts with the, we're eighth largest, obviously some of the larger ones may, but we're we're way up there. And then I also wanted to talk a little bit about how we're approaching instruction nowadays in our division with interdepartmental collaboration. We've learned a lot with this DOJ settlement, which is a good thing. They always say, don't let a good crisis go to waste. So we've been able to learn quite a bit. Next slide. So I want to give you just a little bit of background. This Department of Justice complaint was filed over fifteen years ago. It was like in two thousand fourteen, I believe, around there. And the original complaint stemmed with a particular elementary school. And it was because somebody had complained that integrated and designated English language development was not being done at the school. And so that that started the complaint. Then we didn't hear anything for a few years. And probably three years before COVID, we got a letter stating that they were coming back to find out if there had been any changes and if we had moved to be compliant for English language development instruction. Then we responded, we sent them several items that they asked for, and then COVID hit. And so everything kind of shut down at that point. About a year after COVID, they came back and they gave us a response. And they said, we reviewed everything that you sent us. We've looked at the different items that we asked you to give us more information on. And they seemed pretty content with that and said, okay, we're not going to continue this claim, we're going to settle with you. So they were satisfied with what we had showed them. The three areas in the settlement that they called out, that they said, you're going to need to improve these a little bit more. And then we'll give you three years to do it and then we'll be done if all of this is is compliant. The first one had to do with, within English learners, all of this is for English learners. But the first one is making sure that we provide integrated and designated English language development across the board, K-12. And the federal government basically says that the laws protect the rights of English learners to participate in the classroom in a quality, high quality manner. In order to do that, we have to provide ELD so that it allows our English learners to acquire fluency in English, so that they're gaining the language. But then also, and just as important, they have access to the core curriculum. So they're also doing well with their grades and their student achievement. And one of the first ways that the Department of Justice asked us to do that is to make sure that all of our teachers were trained, that everybody had very specific staff development around English language development instruction. So they did line out exactly what that would look like. If you can click where it says DOJ hours, please, David. They were very specific about yearly, these are the hours that are being required of our teachers for in-person and in-classroom training. So this year, I'm sorry, last year was the first year, was the year that we started to do all the training in integrated and designated ELD. Okay, you can go ahead and click out. So all of our employees are very familiar with that table and how many hours we were requiring of them. Next slide, please. So specifically, year one, which would have been last year, our teachers really were able to get training in designated and integrated ELD and our administrators as well, because they're also requiring this from our site administrators. And theirs included also classroom observations, walkthroughs. And everybody in the district had to have a minimum of five hours on the, on the agreement itself. So they had to know what it was said in the settlement and exactly what the responsibilities were of each one of our employees. Next slide, please. So specifically, last year, we embarked on the training and it was a huge undertaking. And I just want to really give a shout out to Dr. Funches because he and his team were instrumental in getting substitutes. The other directors and all the other departments and even the divisions, Dr. Rodriguez's division as well, they had to give up some of their time in order for us to be able to comply with these hours. So last year was all about much English learner development training. And you can see here the specific modules. So we took six of our regular MOU days. These are days where teachers are required to be in professional development after school and in secondary before school. We use these MOU days to be able to train them in ELD. And then we also had full pullout day trainings as well. So one thing that we learned quickly is that it was really a huge task to have teachers out of the classroom for the pullout days. And then principals were a little bit, you know, little, their noses were a little bent because we took some of their days that they had to use for their training of their staff themselves. But they realized that it was mandated and it was required. In secondary, it was probably a little bit easier, as you can see, there's eleven hundred and eighty-eight teachers in elementary. And then there's a little over seven hundred in secondary. And I know Mr. Acosta did a great job of having the teachers come to the training. And he did it quickly, swiftly. They were pulled out for their training and then that was completed pretty well. But the important part here is that ninety-six percent, I don't have my glasses on, sorry. Yes, ninety-six percent of the elementary teachers were trained. And we only have four percent that need to have some makeups. But a hundred percent of our secondary teachers met the requirement. So we're, we're pretty good for year one, meeting the requirement on staff training. Next slide, please. So the next area that they found was our English learners in special education also needed a little bit of of improvement there. And I'll go ahead and hand it over to Dr. Ryan Rubio and he'll explain a little bit about what the special education findings were about.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. Good evening, board and cabinet. So from the Special Education Department, the the piece that we're looking at right here, it it talks about the district Special Ed Committee Department will be responsible for identifying and locating the the students that are, the special ed students that are designated as ELs so that they can get their related services. And so we just want to let you know that regardless of the DOJ report, we always have, we always need to hear the child find. And so we're always looking for students that are having difficulties and may qualify for a special education. But right now, I'm going to take a moment and introduce our coordinator of Psychological Services, Ms. Beverly McCarthy, to speak to the evaluating piece right here. And she has some additional information on the bullets right there. And then I'll continue with the next slide.
Good evening, everyone. I've had the privilege and the luxury to lead our sixty-four school psychologists for the past five years. And so I am here to speak to these four bullet points, actually five. And so we are increasing access of assessing and evaluating our students in their primary language. And so we we are. And the first, the first bullet there is we have adopted a new assessment called the Woodcock Munoz Language Survey. It has replaced another assessment, I won't give you the acronym, but we literally trained on this last week. And this is really important, it was a big decision to make. So with this new adoption, this assessment will identify the language that the child needs to be assessed in. And that's really important. It makes and drives assessment decisions, whether, what test do we do in English and what test do we do in Spanish? So that goes to the second bullet. That's a matrix of deciding which language, what test do we do and which languages. So we have a matrix at the school psychologist. And I am proud to say over a third of our psychologists speak other languages other than English, mostly Spanish. We have Vietnamese and Arabic as well. So when we decide which assessments we are conducting in English and Spanish, those assessments that we conduct in English, we have to do the CELEM. And that's the Cultural Language Interpretive Matrix. So we will assess in English at times. We have to know as well, depending how they're doing in English. So when assessments are done in English, we use this analysis to determine the cultural loading of our assessments. Some, many of our assessments do have cultural loads in it. And so this will tell us if our assessments are valid or not or what the effects of culture is taking place on the results of that test. And we trained on this two weeks ago as well. So we are increasing our access for our learners in this, this district to understand cultural and linguistic factors on assessment and evaluation pieces. Fourth bullet, I already mentioned, we have over a third of our psychologists who speaks Spanish and other languages. We make an effort to assign ev- every dual program a bilingual psychologist. That's part of my, my master plan. Those campuses who do not have a bilingual psychologist can refer to a rotation where I assign a bilingual psychologist. I have five on the rotation this year who will leave their school site and go conduct the assessment in in the language that's required by the assessment tools I mentioned. Lastly, achievement academic assessments. If a student has been exposed to Spanish instruction in the last three years, they will receive an academic, a standardized academic assessment in Spanish and possibly English too, it depends on the other assessments. So that that concludes my, my discussion.
Question for you. How many different primary languages are spoken in our district?
I am going to guess it's probably close to a dozen.
Oh, you do the same thing for all those?
Yes, yes. We have to take it, we have to assess in the primary language. So it, yes, we do.
And at some point, you don't, I know you probably haven't tonight, but it'd be interesting to see the list of primary languages that are spoken in our district.
I'd love to see that too. I know I see Vietnamese come across quite frequently. There's some actually other languages where we have to contract out.
Right.
Because the lang, we don't have anyone who speaks that language, yes.
And I think the board should be aware of that and the community. So if you can give us that list, it'd be great at some point.
President Tillman, we have over forty languages in our district and we do contract out. We have some like Arabic, Vietnamese that are more common that we have staff for. Everything that we do not, we contract out.
So forty, I underestimated.
Right. I knew it was going to be substantial. So if you can, can you forward that list to the board and maybe get in an update? Thank you very much.
So moving on in terms of what we've done this year. So the the four pieces right now that just give you an update on, there's two of the, the links right there. So David, if you can, for the first part, it talks about training all of our EL students. And so this is a document that we came up that we provided working with our colleagues in multilingual that is, provides all of the IEP teams just a checklist to make sure that the needs that our English learners have are being met. And so this is there for you to review and it's linked in the presentation for you to have. And so this is just one of the, keep going a little bit further, David, you can see the date last year. And that's when we were at the heart of preparing this and making sure that working collaboratively with multilingual. Okay, go back to the presentation, please. So then the bullets two, three and four, they go to the top, the top document. So let me get to those before you get to the, the document, David. So looking at establishing a protocol for collaboration and the timely identification of servicing of EL students. This is where our collaboration with multilingual is really looking at making sure that the students are, the teachers are collaborating with the, the program specialists and from special education as well. The third bullet, talking about each site establishing and maintaining the staff, the list of staff members aware of EL practices and procedures. And one of them, typically the ELF is who's been responsible and designated to attend the IEP meetings with us. And then the fourth bullet, talking about the, roughly the same thing in terms of making sure the administrators and are aware of IEP and five oh four meetings, that there needs to be a teacher with appropriate certification there to be able to speak to those components. And now if you can go to the list, David, you'll see, this is a document that has a lot of, a lot of information. So looking at, he's going to slowly scroll down. There's just strategies for differentiated instruction, research-based strategies. This is all information for IEP team members, the teachers, Gen Ed teachers, as well as our special education teachers. And then really what the, what teachers will do and what students will do. So for our professional educators, knowing what this document provides them is, that's a way for the teachers to ensure that the students' needs are being met related to language, language development, academic language development, and then going on through the rest of the pieces there. And one last piece, David, at the top of this document. If you could go and click on where it says goalbook strategies. This is just another resource at the team, the, the collaboration with multilingual that we put together as a resource for teachers and IEP team members. And this is just a lot of different tools based on universal design for learning. And just, it's just resources available for the teams to make sure that their, the students' needs for our English learners are being met, especially if they're duly identified as EL and special education. And that's what I had for you for those two slides, any questions? Thank you, everybody. Next, I want to turn it over for the next slide to my colleague, Dr. Amy Coker, she's our Director of Elementary Instruction.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Coker, I'm the Director of Elementary Instruction. And so, I'm going to be talking to you a little bit about Section Three, which, which really identifies the settlement overview and response to elementary GATE programs. And so, elementary GATE programs, there are some key areas that were identified. And it has to do with access to programs and also monitoring of the programs and monitoring the number of students that are being identified every year for GATE. So, one of the things that in the settlement that was called out was that the district will assume the responsibility that, to ensure that all information about GATE programs are provided to parents in a language that they understand. Number two, if we are testing, and we do have a test that I'll speak to in just a little bit, that there is an ability to administer directions in, for testing in Spanish and any other languages by request. And finally, number three, one of the other bullets, it speaks to the commitment that we will take to continue to track the number of English learners tested and also those that qualify for advanced programs to ensure that we are providing access. Okay, so, next slide. So, here's some of the actions that have taken place in terms of elementary GATE. We do have a screening mechanism in Grade Three, and so, we provide testing for all Grade Three students and give the opportunity for all of Grade Three students to be able to take this, the assessment. So, a permission slip is sent home with the parents in both English and Spanish. And we are able to share that information, they do have to sign a permission slip in order to, for their students to be tested. But overall, we work alongside AET and also our testing coordinators to do outreach to ensure that parents know about this opportunity. So, in this, I do have the embedded permission slips that have been created for your review as well. In addition to that, one of the tests that we currently use is called the Noglieri, and it is a non-verbal assessment. And so, directions for this particular assessment can be administered in any language. One of the things, this particular assessment is, they're puzzles, it's patterns, it's pattern completion. And so, that is what our, you know, third graders engage in when they take this particular assessment. In addition to that, our team, and I have to make sure I mention Dr. Rebecca Clark, who has been working in this with GATE programs for many, many years, has worked with her team and Dr. Culbertson to create a handbook provided in English and Spanish that really describes the GATE programs and the identification process that takes place, including assessments, including teacher training, and any magnet programs that are available to our students and families. And then, finally, we are tracking very carefully the number of students that we do assess every single year with our third graders, but then also those students who, in like, and the quali-, and who qualifies to ensure that we do have a proportion that is very much in sync with our district proportion. And so, we have been taking a good, close look at that and providing that information back to the people that we're working with on this settlement.
Adina?
Thank you so much for that presentation. It's, it's been a while since I haven't really heard a lot about the GATE programming. And when it comes to the English learners, many years ago, that's how I got involved in the school district, is I, I came to the board meeting with many of the parents that their children was identified, but didn't even know what that meant. And so, when I was involved then, many of the students who were English learners couldn't necessarily go. Well, I mean, they could attend the GATE magnet programs, but unfortunately, it seems like there was, there was several hurdles back then. And so, I'm noticing now that, you know, with this presentation, our students who are GATE identified, and it seems here that they're doing it at third grade, before it was second and fourth graders. So, I don't know what that change came about, maybe we can ask, I'll ask for a presentation in the future for the GATE department. But for this purpose, what are students, once they're identified, what are, what are the options they have? I know that there was a big push for me back many years ago, having dual immersion with, with, with EL students that are identified as GATE. And that way, they can still, you know, still advance. We don't want to have redundant and repetitive work. That is a big no-no for, for GATE identified students, so what are we doing to help them?
Thank you for your question. So, we do have a dual immersion GATE program that is being offered right now at Brown Elementary. And then, we're starting now in kindergarten building up at, at Musquey Elementary, thank you. And then, we have seven other GATE identified sites. So, we do provide busing if parents choose to attend, have their child attend one of those sites. But they can also attend their homeschool too. And we do a lot of training for our teachers. Our, our GATE program training is opened up to teachers in GATE programs, but beyond. So, we have a lot of teachers at every, of all the other sites really, that do attend as well.
And are they all GATE certified that are working? Because that's a different thing, because, you know, you can have students, and that's why, back then, it was my big push, having the GATE magnet programs, because you can have school sites that were not necessarily gated magnet programs and their students were, were struggling. So, are the, are the teachers GATE certified that are working with GATE students?
At the magnet programs, they are, and we're built-
At the regulars, at the, the general public.
Yes, and we're working to certify the teachers at the other sites as well.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So, that would be a request for the district, if we can get maybe a magnet update on what we're doing on the testing, because back then, it was second, all second and fourth graders, now it seems like it's just third graders.
Good evening again. And with respect to the advanced courses at high schools and even the honors classes at the middle school, all these core teachers have already been trained with the inclusion strategies, thanks to the work of Mrs. Applegate and, you know, Mr. Acosta. With that, students are now in AP courses and IB and in all these advanced courses. They start having small group instruction and also grouping students with varying levels so they can help each other out. That is a strategy which, across board, you can see how to support these advanced learners. And also, we have lots of these online platforms available for them to prepare for these AP exams like Khan Academy. And we also offer one-on-one tutoring for these higher level courses, along with all the other. They, actually, it's offered for all the students and they can have that one-on-one online. And again, students are identified based on their interest and strength. So, if a student is able to perform very well in Spanish and they, they are very fluent in Spanish, we try to make sure that they can enroll in AP Spanish. And now, we are also starting to push them into dual enrollment. I mean, when, next time I bring that, you will see that dual enrollment Spanish especially, where, as a very high participation rate, on a very, close to eighty-five, ninety percent completion rate, the success rate for the dual enrollment program. And finally, like, you know, we want to make sure that EL students are also using this, like, giving them these advanced courses and increasing their rigor, they will be able to participate in their PSAT and SAT programs. We include them in all these trainings and workshops for them. And counselors are really, are, because of the increased awareness this DOJ and all these trainings have created, counselors and other teachers are being very intentional about identifying whether, what are the students that are able to take on these courses and be very successful at them.
Thank you, Dr. Venkatesan. So, that was year one, Board. So, so, we really tried to create systems. We looked at the settlement, specifically looked at the areas of improvement and immediately implemented systems. And as you can see, especially around special education, really changed the way that we actually do things. So, you guys have been very proactive, thank you so much for that. Some things that we did learn, so we said, English learners, it was integrated, designated ELD and a lot of training. Oh, I'm sorry, you have a question?
Before you go on, Ms. Abayo had a question.
Thank you so much. I had a couple of questions, actually, I was kind of looking for a post, but since we started asking questions, let me jump in there. So, in your third, third slide where you talked about the required hours, I just had a quick question on that. In class support, what does that look like specifically and who provides this support?
Class support is actually probably program specialists from the Multilingual Programs Department that will go out to the classrooms to help coach teachers. But we not only have program specialists in Multilingual, all the different departments have them. And they've all been trained as well, they know strategies as well, so they would actually be going into the classroom. So, it could be personnel at the school site that's been trained or the different personnel that lives in the departments that can provide that. So, it can be lesson study, coaching, modeling, different things that they would be doing with the teachers in the classroom.
Monitor, sorry, we monitor the effectiveness of this how?
We monitor the hours right now and, and then in year three, you'll see that we, we have to set up systems this year on exactly how we're going to identify those practices that have been high yielding. And so, we'll go back and see what practices it was that they were implementing in the classroom and see how that affected student achievement.
Three, that's, that's going to be more in year three.
Well, we're, we're looking at it now because we want to make sure that it's effective, but we will have to report to them in year three, the effectiveness of what we've done.
I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on with the mic. And then, also for number two, for special, for the special education piece, so, how, how do we differentiate through the assessments whether a student's... There's a difference between academic language and then basic language, right? And so, the WMLS focused heavily on academic language in both English and Spanish. So, how do we differentiate when there's, when assessments are being done that a student, if a student has never been, you know, in a, in a dual immersion class or in a classroom out in a different country where they have formally gained education, academic education, how do we go about assessing those students?
Oh, oh, okay, I was going to say, there's a battery of assessments that are done, so that's not the only one, so you can speak to the other ones.
Yeah, so, the WMLS is in English and Spanish, and it is basic vocabulary as well, it's not just academic. And it will tell, the scores will tell whether the child is more proficient or dominant in Spanish or English. But that's just one data piece, we do have LPAC data as well, we don't rely on that solely. A lot of times, that is old and we, when we get to assess the child, interviews with the family, observations, seeing what their language is on the recess and in cafeteria. That's when we can begin to understand what their academic language is and what their basic interpersonal skills are. So, the WMLS is just one starting point for us to begin to design the whole assessment.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. I, I want to make sure that, you know, as we're saying it out in public, that we're understanding that the listeners are aware of what some of these assessments are. So, I do have some more questions and, you know, I'll be reaching out to the department specifically on some of these points. But thank you so much, and then, just-
They haven't finished their presentation.
I, I understand, I just, I'm covering the slides that they covered. As far as permission slips for GATE programs, there, is there a way that we can opt them in automatically? I know that there's other permission slips or other things that we require parents to, if they don't want to participate in something, that they have to opt out opposing to opting in? Is this, is this something that could be done? Because I know that a lot of times, whether, you know, it may be that parents don't necessarily understand or they miss, you know, the deadline or what have you.
Yeah, and I'm watching those numbers pretty carefully of how many students we have within that grade level and how many permission slips we have. And so, again, that's where we need to continue to do outreach, to be able to inform, to be able to make sure that people understand this, you know, this opportunity, right? And so, so, that is, again, you know, I'm, I'm watching it pretty closely, we have, we have, you know, the participation is very, it's very close, but it's not. Still, we're missing some. And so, again, I can get you that information in the future too. I mean, we can take a look at it, you know, really close, more closely and look at it side by side and see if there is additional communication that needs to take place, you know, at the sites and informational meetings and so forth.
Yeah, because I'm curious to see, you know, out of all of the students enrolled, say, in third grade, how many are actually opting in, opting in to, you know, get assessed?
Yeah, and we have those numbers of the number of students who are being assessed versus how many students we have enrolled.
Do you have a rough percentage?
Yeah, and so, right now, it is total, this year, well, last year, because we're about ready to test again, coming up in November. And so, last year, we had two thousand three hundred and seventy-seven students assessed in Grade Three.
Tested? And, and how many students total in the grade, in that grade?
There's roughly about three, if I had to guess, I'd have to get the numbers, but about three thousand students, so we are missing some.
And then, on that same note, your, your test, your NAD, does that apply only for third graders? I saw somewhere on the slide that you did like, I think, eighth graders as well and-
Yeah, that test you can administer really at any, you know, at other grade levels as well, K through twelve. We do the universal screening at third grade, but we can also test at other grades as well. And so, we do have the opportunity for students to be able to take that assessment in, you know, fourth grade, fifth grade and so on. We just ask that they wait one year before they retest.
So, you only do one year through their academic career, like a fork, not mandatory, but, you know, optional?
It's the universal screener for third grade.
Okay, okay. And I think that was it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Madina?
Just to follow up, I know that it, we, I'm asking a lot of questions for it and I appreciate Ms. Abayo's also questions. So, with the, with the testing for our EL students, I just want to make sure that the district also recognizes that there is also twice exceptional students, students who are both meeting the criteria, which is special needs as well as GATE identified. And if we have that in the general, you know, for students who are English only and we're kind of dropping the ball in some of those areas, I just can't imagine for our EL students, you know, what are we really doing for those services for them as well? So, if we can really look at that, and, and it goes back to what Ms. Abayo said, I, I, a question would be, did we offer the auto-, I mean, it was already opt, students were already opt-in? I can't remember if it was many years ago, if it was, because it felt like, you have to remember, there's students who are identified special needs who are also very bright, but just are not identified by the teachers, you know, the system's kind of dropping the ball. So, if, if we can really look at that, like I said, it would be important for, at least for us, to see what's going on now with the DA Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Tillman. So, going back to this slide, that was year one that we kind of wrapped up in actually creating systems, responding to specific items that the department have just had wanted. What we did learn, however, is that we don't want to work in silos because then we're pulling out teachers twice as much. And again, Dr. Funches was fantastic, but we had to really learn to work more collaboratively. So, year two, the current year that we're in, we took a little bit different approach. So, now, we know all the items and how to improve them, but our approach was a little different in that we really took advantage of existing professional development within the departments and infused it with English learner strategies and some of the requirements that were for English learners. For instance, we always have summer conference and some of you were there as well. It's where all the teachers in the entire district, K-12, come together for professional development. Well, these two days in the summer, we took advantage of the fact that we had all of the teachers there and we infused those two days with English learner strategies. One day in particular, we called our Kagan Day, and those are very effective practices for English learners and all of our teachers at once were trained. So, we were really excited about that and it was a collaboration between all of the departments in the division. So, we were able to knock out two complete days there that we will not, no longer have to pull teachers out for later on in the year. We've also now have a special focus in our principals', our principals' meetings or our principal institute in the summer as well, where we had English learner strategies infused throughout that and they'll continue to hear that all year long. So, every month at the principals' meetings, we'll be bringing some of the EL strategies, the walkthrough tools, the effective practices so that our principals are on board as well, so they're, they know what to look for when they come into the classroom. And then, also, you saw that special ed did a great job training all of their teachers at their summer conference, but from now on, there will be collaborative MOU days for the special ed team as well with our regular ed teachers so that now everybody is getting the training at the same time and we're all on the same page. Also, Multilingual has done a great job, and you'll hear a little bit more about that, with some of the tools that they've created and provided to our teachers and our principals so that they're very specific about what they're looking for. But I do want to call your attention to where it says upcoming. We, we've only taken two of the professional development afternoons from the school sites versus six in year one. Principals were very grateful- Principals were very grateful for that because now they have more opportunities for professional development in their, in their own schools. So now we only need two and we'll be able to fulfill that requirement. And then in secondary, if you want to click on the designated ELD, Mr. Acosta is very specific about the training for secondary teachers, and he's able to knock that out pretty quickly. That's why they have 100% compliance there. So you can see all the offerings where he'll be pulling teachers by content level to make sure that they're, they're covering all the required hours. So we're in really good shape for year two as far as professional development goes. Thank you, David. And if you go ahead and hit the next slide for year three. So what's coming for year three, we are going to continue with the training because every year they have to provide, these, these hours have to be complied with every single year. So we're going to continue with that. But I think I really want to point out the fact that we, we just do business differently now in our division because now we are really collaborating with everybody to be able to comply with all these different requirements. And then again, I was mentioning that in year three, we'll be looking at compliance reporting. So we will have to look at our systems and how we gauge effectiveness of what we're doing. We will go back and be able to see to what level we were able to implement. And we will report to the Department of Justice. We actually have turned in one report already this year that they asked us for, and we're waiting for some feedback from them from that. But then at the end of year three, we will go ahead and send all that in and then we'll see what they think about our compliance and how we will continue with them. Next slide, please. So now I'd like to pass it on to Dr. Cleveland. She will do a review of our last year's LPAC data. Dr. Cleveland?
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here again to talk you through how we assess our English learners as far as accountability for the state of California. So the state of California takes a look at what they refer to as English learner progress. And that's established from the Summit of LPAC that our students who are designated as English learners take every single spring. And so what the progress monitor measure looks at for the California State Dashboard is, are our students all making progress amongst that scale of one to four for our English learners? And so for us, you can see that our overall progress is at 48.5%. That means that 48.5% of our English learners make progress each year towards reclassification and proficiency of language. If, David, if you'll go to the next slide, you can see that in comparison to the local and similar districts in the state of California, we are at the very top and our district actually has one of the highest averages for English learner progress in the state of California. And that is actually a trend that our district has seen over time. And so that is, you know, under Mrs. Applegate's leadership previously as the Director of Multilingual and then carrying forth into the Educational Services Division, we've really been able to preserve a lot of the systems and strategies that have supported our English learners over the years. And so we're continuing to see that pay off. In particular, coming out of the pandemic where we saw a lot of sliding back with student groups, we did not necessarily see that with our English learners continuing to make consistent progress in acquiring language. This is our California Dashboard for this year, 2023. The new dashboard does release on December 1st, 2024. So when that happens, we will bring forth that new data to you at that time. But until then, it is embargoed by the state of California. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this data point. And I look forward to bringing you the new stuff in December.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, and we'll pass it on to Mr. Ojeda, who will explain a little bit more about other ways that we monitor our English learner progress.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. Good evening, Board. A pleasure to be here with you tonight. So my job is to talk a little bit more about reclassification and what that means for our students. When a student enrolls in school in California, they're asked to take a home language survey. And on that survey, there's four questions that refer to language spoken in the household. And if that, during those questions, the parent that's filling out the survey acknowledges that there is another language spoken in the home, that triggers school districts to give what's called the initial LPAC. And that is a baseline assessment to see if a student is, meets the English criteria in order to be able to do well academically, not knowing, you know, the English language. So that assessment kind of gives us a screenshot of where that student is as far as their English language development. So if a student does not meet the criteria on the initial LPAC, that student is then designated an English learner. So the only way to get out of being an English learner, once identified an English learner, is to meet the state criteria. And there's four different criteria that a student must meet. The first one is the assessment of English language proficiency. The second one is teacher evaluation. The third one is parent or guardian opinion and consultation. And the fourth is a comparison of student academic performance. So number one, which is the assessment of English language proficiency, otherwise known as the LPAC exam or the English language proficiency assessment for California, a student must meet the criteria of scoring an overall score of four. There are four domains on that assessment, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And so that would be the first criteria. If a student has an IEP and in the IEP it specifies that they can take an alternate assessment, we call that the alternate LPAC. And on that assessment, they need to score a three. On the second criteria, simply is a teacher evaluation. At the elementary level, a student needs to meet grade level standards in reading and in language arts. And in secondary, a student, student scores a minimum academic GPA of a 2.0 or receives a minimum grade of a C in ELA or English class. The third criteria simply is parent or guardian opinion and consultation. That just means that we want to include the parent in being part of the process, informing them what all this means, right? Sometimes it's a lot of information for our parents and they need to know why it's important for their, their son or daughter to be reclassified and the benefits of reclassification. So we do that in the form of a letter. Sometimes we have school sites meet with the parents themselves. Sometimes we do it through email communication. It just depends on the school site. And the fourth one is a comparison of student academic performance. In our district, we use the CASP and they must meet or exceed, in other words, scoring a three or a four on the CASP. Or we give them an alternate assessment called the STAR reading assessment, and they must score in the 25th percentile. So these four criteria, they can be pretty rigorous for somebody who doesn't understand the language. And so our job in our department is to make sure that teachers are providing the teaching strategies, primarily in the form of designated integrated instruction, and putting in place those supports that a student needs to be successful. And that's really what we've been doing with all the training as far as the DOJ that Ms. Applegate has spoken to. We're really trying hard to make sure that all of our teachers, 100% of them, not only know the strategies of designated integrated ELD, but are doing it, you know, on a regular basis and, and, and doing it effectively. And so there's a lot that goes into that. I do want to point out what kind of impact the LPAC does have in our district. We have 10,189 English learners in our district. I believe there's about 44,000 students overall. That's about a quarter of our students that, that need to take the LPAC exam. So that's significant. So I just wanted to point that out. And if you're wondering how many students are duly identified, that means that they're, they're classified as an English learner but also have an IEP and qualify for special education, we have approximately 1,200 students. That's K-12 across the board. Next slide. This slide simply indicates the pattern of reclassification, starting from the COVID year, 2020. The rates have obviously increased. All school districts struggled during COVID. You might imagine trying to be an English learner and trying to learn virtually or online without any type of supports. And therefore, I think that was, that played a large role in the drop in reclassification rates. Since then, as you can see, we have increased significantly and are close to, to meeting 15% of our students, which has in the past been the state goal. Not so sure they, they continue to have a state goal, but that's our in-house goal and that's the bar that we're using so that our teachers have know, you know, what, where we're trying to shoot for, right? And so it's always, it's always a continuum moving forward and up. And so that's our goal. Next slide. I'd like to shift the presentation over to my colleague, Tex Acosta, who'll present the next couple of slides.
Good evening, Board. I'm going to be covering the pathway to biliteracy slide, and this is something to celebrate. What the pathway to biliteracy slide is, it's a precursor to the seal of biliteracy which is offered at the high school level. And this measures students in third, fifth, and eighth grade. They have to meet certain criteria to earn this distinction and they do get a medal for it. The criteria there, you can see it, they, it's got to be a scholar in third, fourth, and fifth, and eighth, third, fifth, or eighth grade. They have to be proficient in English literacy and then also in a different language. And there's a lot of different languages that are represented. They must complete an application and then an essay is required for the elementary level. You'll notice that last year, we more than doubled what we did the year prior to that. We're very, very proud of that. We had about 843 students earn a pathway to biliteracy. Our elementaries did very well. Our high schools did exceptional. But I want to give a shout out, a well-deserved shout out to our middle schools who the year before had 62 students earn this. So they went from 62 students to 485 the next year. So that was a big, big improvement on their part. And this is again, a big precursor to what they'll do in high school. Next slide, please. So this is the seal of biliteracy that is given by the state. This is not an in-house award. This is given by the state where they actually received a golden seal on their diploma and they also get a medal to go with their graduation. Last year, we had 588 students, which is the most in the county. And we've had the most in the county really for a number of years now. So that's no surprise to us, something that we're very proud about. Our students must be in the 12th grade, so they work since they get to high school to build themselves up to be ready and be in that position by the, by the last year of high school. They must demonstrate again, English proficiency through a number of different ways and then a different language as well. So they have to demonstrate it in both to be able to do that. Last year, we had eight languages that were represented. They were Portuguese, Spanish, Tagalog, Tongans, Mong, Arabic, French, and American Sign Language as well. So there was eight different languages that represented in that. And that is how our students earn that particular seal of biliteracy. So we're doing very, very well. Next slide. Unless you want to take the first part?
Yeah, yeah. So this slide simply represents the expansion of our multilingual programs. A few years back, those of you that were on the board may have remembered that you voted to change the name of our department or agreed to do that from the English learner department to the multilingual programs department. And I think that better represents what we do because not only do we work with English learners, but as you can see, we have 24 elementary dual schools, including, and also middle school and high schools that are dual language programs. The model that we use is a 90-10 model at our elementary schools. We do use a 50-50 model in middle and high schools. And so those have proven to be the most effective. That's why that's the route we go in our, in our district. So it's something to be very proud of, to have this many multilingual programs. Also note that at Belvedere, we have a trilingual program, which includes Vietnamese, English, and Spanish. And so I challenge you to look around and see if you can find a district that has more dual programs than we do. It's going to be hard to find. And so that's something that you as a board should be very proud of. I know I've been in the district seven years and I always, you know, commend the board. And at that time, I was under the leadership of Anna Applegate, who hired me in the district as her assistant director. And I was floored when I saw how many dual programs you had. Even during times where politically that may have not been the right thing to do politically, this board stood firm and as a result, we're flourishing. And now the rest of the state's trying to catch up to what we're doing. So hats off to the board for that and your support and our dual language programs.
On the right side of the screen, you'll notice the middle schools. We have three middle schools and one high school that have our dual immersion program. These are 50-50 models, so they get half of their instruction in English and half of it in Spanish for these particular schools. And I'm glad that you can all brag about that San Marino High School is the only school that we know of in the state that has a 50-50 model at the high school level. So that's a, that's a big point for us to celebrate. This last year, Serrano, we opened up another school because of a lot of demand to have a dual immersion program, and they currently have a seventh grade with eighth grade coming in next year for dual immersion. So we have it at Pacuma, Arrow View, and Serrano. And then there's so much demand that we're looking at possibly expanding. We don't know what school yet to one of our high schools in the following year to be able to meet that transition from middle school to, to high school. And then right below that, you'll see the Newcomer Academy. Of course, Mrs. Applegate, when she was still in this position, started that particular, at Pacific High School, the Newcomer Academy. It's been highly successful when you've got the students who really are just newcomers, meaning they just arrived in the country, they don't even speak pedestrian English, it's very, very low. You have self-contained classrooms with really good teachers and a lot of support, and that's worked very well. So this year, this is our first year that we're, we're starting this academic school year. At Royal Valley, we opened up our second one and we have the same model that we're running. We have roughly about 68 students in that particular program. And we're monitoring very carefully to make sure that we get very good results and providing support with competent teachers. We've got educational assistant threes and then student, college interns as well, providing support to those students. So we think we're going to have great success and hopefully a year from now, we can come back and share some of that data with you.
I did forget to mention, then in red, if you see those schools that are, have red on them, those are the ones that are expanding. Typically, we do a year of training. Once a school decides, based on the community feedback, that they want to become a dual language school, we do one full year of training and trying to get them ready so that they do it right when we start the program. And so that's what we're doing at some of our sites already, and we continue to look for other opportunities for growth. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you so, Board. You can see that to your commitment and to our parents, you know, our parents have been very vocal about bilingual programs and they've been steadfast and have not wavered. So you can see there's the tremendous expansion. Needless to say, I won't belabor this slide, but there are so many benefits. Research shows everywhere that there are so many benefits of students who are multilingual. The cognitive benefits alone are just the enhanced executive function. That's everything that our brain does to pay attention, to problem solve, to multitask, to organize. It's been shown that people who speak multiple languages are able to do that at a higher rate. There's evidence now of delayed onset of dementia or even less incidence. People don't tend to get dementia who are multilingual. And so that's obviously something, something great that we would all aspire to. Improved memory, the same thing. Neuroplasticity is the brain's ability to adapt and learn new skills like music, like language, like coding, like some of these newer innovative concepts that kids are learning these days. So pliable brains are also much, much more adaptable to learning those types of concepts. And then, of course, we can't underestimate the cultural and social benefits as well. In this world that is, is round and what do they say, the world is flat now? Now we're all connected. We're all connected and everybody's learning from different languages and different, different types of instruction. So this is bringing us closer as well. So people who are multilingual, multicultural really have a lot more connection to the rest of the world. You just have to look at social networking and you'll, and you'll see that and all the global opportunities for our students as well. Next slide. So in tying all of that up, I think one of the important things is we feel like we're in very good shape for compliance. But even beyond that, we don't want to be compliant. We want to be the best. We want to do what's right by our students. And I'm very proud of the team and all the different areas that they presented today because a lot of these things are a lot of hard work and a lot of innovation. And our teachers and principals as well, everybody has really come together and done what we needed to do to move forward with this settlement, but more importantly, to do what's right by our English learners. So we will continue with our interdepartmental collaboration. This is how we do business now. We know now, a district our size, we can't be silos anymore. So finally, this vision has come to fruition where we're working together. These are all the different areas that they are working together with language arts, math planning, the summer conferences. You'll see several different examples there, pretty much of how they work together to get all of this done. Next slide, please. In our next steps, basically, we're, we're really excited about all the instruction. In tier one, we know that tier one needs to be strong and needs to be good so that we can continue to move all of our students forward. This is how we move all of our students forward. We are very much committed to the Universal Design for Learning, UDL. Those of you that attended Dr. Howard's presentation, he spoke to that. This is how we're moving our students forward, all of our subgroups. So we're very proud of, of the work that's been done with that as well. So that will be part of our tier one instruction. And then we continue, continue very strategic and very targeted with tier two and tier three interventions. We are now at the point where we can identify tier two interventions specifically for our English learners. And so we also want to make sure that we continue to work with our special education teachers. It's been a godsend that you are in educational services with us now because now you really are working hand in hand with our general ed teachers as well. We'll continue with the walkthroughs with our principals. We have many coaches at all the different sites, so we're trying to use all of our coaches, our reading coaches, our math coaches, wherever we have, also to walk through the classrooms and be looking for the same thing for our English learners. And then we also want to look at feasibility of expanding even more. Mr. Acosta mentioned that we, we are looking at a second high school. So that would be exciting to continue to expand those programs at the high school level as well. We'll continue with the training, making sure that expanding sites or sites that are showing interest get the background and the feedback that they need in order to have successful programs. And I think year three, we're going to be looking at bringing you all the data on what's effective, how we complied, and, and some of the things that gave us the best results. So I look forward to bringing that to you after- So I look forward to bringing that to you after year three. I want to tell you, we're done, we're checked off, we're good. But more importantly, our English learners are thriving. Any questions? Thank you.
Grande.
Thank you for all of that. It's really exciting. So do I hear that, did I hear somewhere in there that our goal is for all of our schools to be dual immersion? And also, I do have another one. Oh, I was just wondering, personally, I just want to know, does our teacher training and development, does it go back and use that old California English Language Development Framework? That it was in, we had to take it when we get a CLAD, we take that. And I remember, it really did help me actually, when I didn't have all of this, in creating lesson plans, because it actually, if you really looked through there, there was actually some things that I know we had. I had a teacher at UCR that brought it out. And I always kept my copy, because I could always go back and refer it to it. So I'm just wondering if teachers, that after all the professional development and all that, if they have that ability to go to that actual framework for the ELD that was given during CLADS? Because we take them away in the beginning when we first become a teacher and then gradually it fades away and you don't remember it anymore.
Yes, and if you allow me the luxury, I forgot, I would like to introduce some of the multilingual programs department staff that actually did all the training and created many of the modules. I'd like to present Mr. Noel Pena Nury, Mr. Frank Silva. They are both from the multilingual programs department, program specialists. And then our new coordinator, Mr. Victor Mendoza. But the program specialists were phenomenal in creating and doing all this training. And to answer your question, absolutely. So the California Framework for ELA/ELD is the backbone of the training. So we basically are showing teachers how to take English language standards, English language arts, and infuse the English language development standards, which is what you're talking about, the training. So that is the framework that we use when they create the modules, because that is what the DOJ has also identified as effective.
Do they get to take home a copy of that framework, put it in their classroom? That's what I'd like to see.
It's digital now, so we can give them the links. Everything's digital these days. But they use that framework, absolutely, to show the different parts of ELD instruction. And to answer your question about the dual programs, I don't think right now we're saying every single school, but I'm gonna bring you some very interesting, very promising data when the embargo is lifted on dual programs and the achievement of students in dual programs. I think you'll be very pleased.
Hello, thank you.
Mrs. Grande, Mrs. Medina.
First of all, I'm just really glad to hear it. Thank you for the presentation. I think this was something that, it's been a while since we really got information on what the updates are, especially when it came to the multilingual programs. I'm so glad to hear that we have the ninety-ten model still going. You know, I was always curious, what are we doing in the department? And I'm glad we're doing it that way and we're continuing that hard work. I did see what was missing and maybe you can note that for when you're looking at the interdepartmental collaboration is including the GATE, because it is equally, I mean, it should be equally as important because of the, people don't realize, student underachievement, high school dropout. A lot of the students are GATE identified. And if we're not providing those resources, they find other means of, you know, things to do versus education. So we want to make sure that they're engaged.
Yes, Medina, Mrs. Alexander.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It was extremely knowledgeable and just a lot of packed-in information, so thank you. Question related to, well, actually acknowledgement, related to just the change from this year to next year, just the lessons learned and what was implemented. Just want to just commend you, you and your staff, Mrs. Applegate, and just what you all implemented. It's a sign that you were intentional and you were paying attention, even without DOJ saying, hey, make this change. And just always holding our scholars first, so thank you. One question related to the schools. I just wanted to know, was there any reason why the academy didn't include middle schools? It was just high schools?
Newcomer Academy, I believe. We tend to have the higher clusters of newcomers in high school. So we'll get a year where we'll have eighty, you know? We've not seen that in middle school as a whole group. We'll get splatterings here and there, but we've never had quite those numbers that I can remember in some time. It's usually at the high school level. So we started there. But if there were a need, we'd have to take a look and see. But middle school's quite not as heavy with newcomers.
Additionally, the reclassification rates at the middle schools are quite high compared to the high schools. So we think there's more of a need also at the high school. It's very obvious.
Okay, thank you.
Subios.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you, thank you so much for this presentation. All the questions that I asked really come from a place of just trying to understand. There's so much, this presentation was so packed of so many different departments that we can probably spend hours and hours and hours just, you know, going through each one. So, you know, there's some areas that I know a little bit more of and then others that I really don't know as much as I'd like. So again, thank you so much for taking some of this time to share with us. Just, I had a question on the reclassification criteria. The third step, I guess, the parent guardian opinion and consultation. And only because I've been asked in the past, by parents, actually. What happens when a parent does not agree with the site's recommendation?
Ultimately, the state is very clear that the student's right to reclassify supersedes whether the parent agrees or not. We don't like to do that, so we usually, and I have not had, I've had one case where the parent flat out said, no, we don't want it. So we didn't do it. But we've had a handful maybe that have questioned, so we called the parent in and then we explained thoroughly the benefit, the reason you want to do that before they get to middle school. A lot of them don't know that they would still have to be in ELD classes in middle school if they were not reclassified, and that will impact their schedule. So usually when we explain and we sit down and show them the benefit, we've not had an issue. In my entire career here, well, since I was the director, I only had one parent who was adamant that they did not want it, because the fear was that they would have services taken away. But even if a child is reclassified, the MTSS structure at the schools still allows for additional intervention regardless of whether you're an English learner or not. So, but once we explain to them, they're usually on board with it.
And I'll just add that my experience has been very similar in the seven years that I've been in the district. Maybe a handful of parents have come to me. And once we explain that we're just not gonna forget about their student. In fact, we're required by EdCo to monitor for four years after a student's reclassified. And so our job doesn't end when they reclassify. It's to make sure they're at grade level and progressing like any other student. And if we see that they're faltering or struggling, then our job is to intervene. We do the SST process, you know, and we can identify the student with an English learner and see if there's anything we need to do if it relates to that issue.
Thank you so much for saying that and that. And if I may, Mr. Subios, one thing that I might add that I'm very proud of in this district, our reclassification rates are high, but our students do well. So once they're reclassified, our reclassified students continue to be the highest-scoring students in the district. So if there were like some problem there, you would see that they'd be slipping back if they weren't ready. But we actually are very proud that the reclassified students score the highest. Thank you for mentioning that they, just because they reclassify, doesn't mean that they're, you know, we sent them off. And no, there's some monitoring process that goes for, I think you said, four years, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And so when they reclassify and they pass the ALPAC, that's really the minimum requirement. They still may need additional supports. All that means, though, is they're not required to have ELD specifically any longer. That's all that means. But we still want to make sure that they're academically successful.
Awesome, thank you so much. And then my last question, really, it's on slide sixteen. And I wish that it would have, I had requested in a previous board meeting and I wish it would have been displayed this way. What is the reclassification rates? You gave us four years, great amount of years in terms of, you know, expansion or length. But what is the, by levels, what is elementary, middle school, and high school reclassification rates look like? We have it broken down and even by school, so we can bring you that information. Would you like me to put it in an update so you can get it right away? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Section nine, forward discussion, nine point one, Arrowhead United Way, the Magic of Music and Motown sponsorship. What I'm doing on these sponsorships, if they're returning sponsorships and they're asking for the same amount we did the previous year, then they'll be agendaized. And just so the board knows, we gave this one for the United Way last year. So it's on the agenda again, so we will entertain a motion. But by seeing it and knowing that we did it last year, all the questions should be answered in terms of, do they service our kids? And that type of thing that needs to be necessary in order to qualify for our sponsorship. Any questions or anybody want to make a motion?
Okay, I motion that we fund it.
Five thousand dollars?
Yes.
It has been moved, I have a second. A second, Ms. Medina had a question.
How much did we fund last year?
Five thousand dollars.
It was five thousand?
Yes.
And you said these funds will help our students as well at the end? I know that you mentioned.
Us United Way, Arrowhead United Way. And they do provide services to our students.
Making sure, thank you.
President Tillman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we gonna do the exact same thing that we did last year where we asked for additional tickets?
Yes. This makes it easier to have a long discussion. That's what we'll do, all of them. Whatever we did the previous year, we'll present that as the ask. And if any of the board members want to change it, then we can have the discussion. But if not, we'll keep it the same. Been moved, a second, vote please. Ms. Preciado.
Aye.
Ms. Rosenblue.
Aye.
And Ms. Villabazo.
Sir, aye.
Motion passed, section ten, action items, ten point one, personal report. Let's present. Motion, please.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Husky, second by Dr. Wyatt, vote please.
Ms. Subios.
Motion carried. For item ten point two and ten point three, the board will now act as a legislative body. CFD number twenty twenty-four dash one. Item ten point two, be resolved, the board education of San Bernardino Cityified School District, acting as legislative body of Community Facilities District number twenty twenty-four dash one, does hereby approve and authorize the execution of a joint community facilities agreement for West Valley Water District and delegate an authority related thereto. Do we have a motion? Moved by Mr. Husky, second by Dr. Wyatt, vote please. Motion carried. Ten point three, the board conducted the first reading of the ordinance on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Following the second reading, the ordinance can then be adopted by action of the board. Be resolved, the board education of San Bernardino Cityified School District, acting as a legislative body of Community Facilities District number twenty twenty-four dash one, does hereby present the second reading by title only and adopts the ordinance of Community Facilities District number twenty twenty-four dash one of the San Bernardino Cityified School District, authorizing the levy of express tax within Community Facilities District number twenty twenty-four dash one. Motion, please.
Come on.
Moved by Mrs. Alexander.
Second.
Second by Dr. Wyatt, vote please. Motion carried. The matters related to CFD number twenty twenty-four dash one are now completed for tonight. The board will no longer be acting as a legislative body of CFD number twenty twenty-four dash one. Section eleven, consent items. Moved by Mr. Husky, second by Dr. Wyatt, are there any to pull? Hearing none, vote please. I don't, because there's a lot of legal stuff in there with the lawyers and, yeah. Motion carried. Section twelve, reports comments by union organizations. Twelve point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
Twelve point two, California School Employees Association.
No report.
Twelve point three, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Twelve point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
And no report.
And section thirteen, reports and comments, thirteen point one, board members. I'll start to my left this time, Ms. Husky.
Thank you. First, thank you for all the wonderful presentations tonight. That was a lot of information, I agree with Ms. Subios. Today, I went to the IBW rodeo. I saw students from Cajon and County there, but I know there are more than that. Those are just the ones that were in the classes that I got to see. I got to see them, they were learning how to assemble like the little electrical boxes and how to measure like the conduit and stuff like that. And then I also got to see this presentation on electrical safety. And I learned a lot about it. So they're having another one, I think it's December third. But if you get a chance to go and go to that electrical safety class, like that was fascinating, just about the things that I didn't know about electrical safety. I also went to Mom Mob at Barton this morning and that was just so much fun. The kids were super energized this morning. They were just, all of them were just like really like excited to be at school today. So I was really, I was really excited about that. San Bernardino County School Boards Association is having their fall joint meeting with Riverside County School Boards Association. This is gonna be October twenty-first at the Doubletree. So you might want to put that on your calendars. We usually go every year and I know Karen will be getting something soon, I would assume, from SBC, SBA on the meeting. But I wanted you guys to get it on your calendar as soon as possible. I was able to participate in Operation Student Recovery One Thousand. We went to go visit, knock on doors, this is Marlene's attendance group. We knocked on doors of students who already were in danger of being chronically absent or had no showed for school. And also, that same morning, Parkside was having the Children's, the Inland Empire Children's Book Foundation, the book giveaway. They gave a book to every student, first through sixth grade at Parkside. So we made, I was partnered with Maria Espinoza. Thank you for being my driver and a great partner that day. So we were able to stop by and participate in the book giveaway as well while we were doing that. So both were really well-attended and I'm really excited about the work we're doing on both of those things. I just wanted to say thank you to our student board members and in particular, Ms. Preciado. This is why we have student board members, because they give us a perspective and information that even, none of the adults can have. No matter how hard we try, their experience is always gonna be different. So I just want to say thank you and I'm just really excited that we have taken the initiative to have this. And we do have our presentation. Thank you to Ms. Post for helping us get that completed. But we put in our application, so we should be presenting at AEC. So hopefully you guys will be able to come to our presentation.
I was fortunate to be with my colleague, Ms. Chahuski, at the same rodeo this morning. And I was really happy because I had both our county students there and our city students there. And more importantly, it was, I think, a great experience for our students because they were getting not just the hands-on knowledge and experience, but also the potential for an amazing career for their lives. And so I think that IBEW did a wonderful job of teaching our students about a career and electrical, an electrical career, excuse me, and what the opportunities are. And a lot of our kids were super excited, got to talk with quite a few of them, and they really enjoyed the experience. So thank you to them. Our, one of our schools, again, was recognized recently in American in School University Magazine, which I love reading, and getting a show off. And it is our Indian Springs School Manufacturing Technology Center, which aligns right with what we saw this afternoon or this evening with our presentation. And I know that some of us on the Facilities Committee got to meet this afternoon with Mr. Pace and Mr. Koenig. And we're looking at naming that facility after Mr. Gallo, which is really, really exciting. And I think they'll be bringing that forward to us in the near future. But it's a great honor for Mr. Gallo and his vision and dream for what we're doing here in San Bernardino City High School District. And I love that we're carrying on his legacy. So thank you to all of you. And I know Ms. Medina was there and Ms. Grande was there with us. And it was just, it's been a while since we met, but I'm, I'm looking forward to our team bringing a presentation to us on what our future plans are for this district as well. I think we'll be very impressed with the vision that we have and the direction that we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Samios?
I don't have any more comments tonight.
Ms. Grande?
I was really happy to be at that facilities meeting today, too. And you know why? Okay, we'll talk more later. But I was also excited to, to have attended was Google Meet with the Group for Roadmap for the Work Students Follow-Up. And I'm just really excited to see what we're doing for our, you know, extra brilliant students. And I'm very proud of those efforts. And on that note, I do have a couple of pages I want to read to you. Right. In the late, there's a question, there's an ask in here. That's why I'm doing this. Okay. In the late 1950s, Eunice Kennedy Shriver realized that children with intellectual disabilities had no place to play. In those days, many of them were institutionalized, and of those who remained with their families, few were allowed to attend school. The first Special Olympics brought disability out into the open, and in so doing, cracked the door to inclusion and integration. Years ago, our own Anderson School was a site for qualifying students for the official Special Olympics of Southern California until it ended at our end. Since then, we have had what is now called Anderson Special Olympics, which is geared towards our own moderate, severe, and profound students, who are usually not in attendance are I, are our ID or intellectual disabilities, or perhaps other students who could qualify to participate in the official Special Olympics. I would like to ask Dr. Applegate and Dr. Rubio to explore the possibility of bringing back to our district the distinction of becoming once again an official site for Special Olympics and prepare our district students with exceptional brilliance and extra opportunity to shine. Thank you.
And do we have the consensus to move forward at that? Looking for the vote. All right. Thank you. And Ms. Medina?
Just wanted to say exactly what Mr., Dr. Wyatt, as well as Ms. Grande. We attended the facilities subcommittee. It's been a long time since we haven't attended, which I'm really grateful that we were able to get together. And then just talking about what's going on with the school district. So I'm really excited that we were able to do that. And that's basically it for tonight.
And Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. Yesterday, for Labor Day, I actually attended the Labor Love Event, and that was put on by the Inland Empire Labor Council, and I thought it was really good. I believe we had two speakers that mentioned about the event, and it was an opportunity to see how we've had a major impact from all the different unions here in our city. And to be able to see just from a chronology standpoint and impact was amazing. And I honestly really didn't know I was attending, but when I got there, just to be able to read the history and just to be there in a room of just so many people are continuing the history and the legacy was amazing. It was just, made me proud just to be there. So I attended that event, and then also attended Mom Mob to kick off National Attendance Month at Barton Elementary. It was awesome. The kids were excited. You can always tell just the difference in the schools with this. I would just say like all the kids, maybe because they had a three-day weekend, I don't know, but they came back and they were excited to be there. And even the teachers were going through and just bringing in their excitement as well. And then the principal, Dr. Rojas, you know, got to give him his props. He was bringing the energy. So it was just great to be there. And then lastly, I know we had a, related to the cell phone policy, there was, we came out and spoke about it, but I'm not sure if we really have an understanding of how it's being implemented at the schools. Because I've had an opportunity to talk to some students at not only, I haven't had a chance to talk to our board members, but I've talked to students in the district. And it appears as if how we're managing that policy, the teachers have their own way of doing it, which is, I mean, if that's acceptable, that's fine. But I'm just wondering, what is our governance? What are we doing in the classroom? And what should be, how are we implementing it? And that's it.
But, and with that, to start, we'll just have them send out the policy that we have on cell phone. We'll start there, and then we can maybe agendize it in the future.
I had made a request that we send the cell phone policy issue to the Student Leadership Advisory Council, and we, I think we did that at the last meeting. So I, I think they should, they're not meeting until September 9th, so just FYI.
We can still make sure that the board gets a copy of the policy. I want to give my condolences to Ms. Hall. She's an active grandparent, parent in the district. She lost her daughter Deja Hall Howard, and her Deja was really active for some years at King and their cheer and just with her kids and her grandkids in the district. So I wanted to make sure I give my condolences to them. And then it's just good to see the hustle and bustle of the school and seeing the kids going back to school, school buses, teachers, and employees of the district, getting back in gear and getting school going, and superintendent and staff doing a great job. You know, normally, at the beginning of a school year, I got a bunch of calls about a bunch of problems, and I haven't gotten that this year. And that's just because of the work that superintendent and the staff are doing. They're making sure they solve problems. So I, and I, I know that because I've been doing this for so long. So I really do appreciate all the work that you all are doing. It is a big deal. The Surgeon General said that four in 10 parents are so stressed that they cannot function. That's a lot of stressed out parents. And I say that because, you know, part of our job in providing a good education is, is to do everything we can to help the parents. And we do a good job at doing that. I just wanted to encourage us to keep doing it and realize that a lot of times, you'll sense the frustration in parents because we're a big organization. And we're here to bend over backwards, to be compassionate, and provide as many resources as possible to help parents, help parents allow their kids to get the best education possible. And we do it. I mean, the fact that we have a sunrise program and a after-school program and we, the busing that we provide, all these tools that we provide that are extra, that we don't have to do legally, we do it because we want to make sure that we give the parents the opportunity to function, realizing they go to work, they have kids at multiple schools. I remember Ms. Medina had her children in schools. She had them at, I think, five kids at five different schools. So we have these super parents out there, and all they want from us is to help them put their kids in the right sites so they can benefit the most. And I just encourage us all to keep doing that and thanking you for doing it. With that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, President Tillman. Appreciate the kudos, and it's a great team effort across the district. I'm blessed to have a, a great team all around me. So thank you for noticing our hard work. I want to start tonight, but just thanking the Ed Services Department for their two presentations today. Thank you very much. Very thorough presentation, very informative, and I appreciate the hard work behind it. It not only garners confidence amongst ourselves, the board, but also in the community. And also, thank you for the work that you put together for the CTE presentation. I know one of our board members had asked to make sure that our parents knew about the programs, how to access, who to call. So thank you guys for being so specific on that. I also want to give a shout out to Terry Boinkin and his organization. Just amazing work, and I love to see the evolution that's happening even within their organization, where they started as a place for kids to box and do something positive. And now he's moving from developing gold medalists and championships to working with students with autism and developing their skills. So I really appreciate Terry's reflection on his program and really building it to address all the kids. So shout out to Terry and his group. And President Tillman, thank you for, again, acknowledging the hard work. I think we're doing something right together collectively. I know Terry today let me know that we're over 300 students above projection already. So, you know, part of me makes, feels like people are gaining confidence, they're excited about the energy, they're seeing all this positive information being shared in the, in the meetings. So thank you to the whole team and to the board for just creating this momentum with us. I want to also start by just offering my sincere condolences to Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers and Dr. Arlington Rogers, you know, friends of mine since we were teenagers. Gwen's mom passed away, and I think we're honoring her tonight. So our sincerest condolences to our colleague and longtime friend. So Gwen, we're, we're with you. We're with you. Our prayers are with you. And then, board, I want to let you know that tomorrow, I have asked and notified Mayor Tran that I'll be making, I'll be part of the public participation tomorrow to talk a little bit about our multi-year vision, but also to thank the mayor and the city council for all the support that they've given us this past year. They've been at hundreds at events, graduations, awards, really making the effort to create this collaborative spirit. So I'll be there tomorrow to pass out our multi-year vision and our sunglasses and see if I can get President Tillman to show up. But it'll be at 5:00. It'll be in the, the chambers are now in the public library just right down the street here. So I'll fill out my little green card and ask to speak. So it's just to keep the positivity and the momentum. So if you can make it tomorrow, that'd be great. 5:00 at the library. So we can start with the slide, please? Yeah, fill them in the library. Thank you. So the last board meeting, the question was asked about the cell phone policy. So here's a little bit of information. The state legislature has moved to the governor's desk, Assembly Bill 3216, which is called the Phone Free School Act. And so it is waiting the governor's signature for it to become law. More than likely, it will be signed. And so that the board is aware, this directs all school districts to enforce a cell phone policy that limits students' access to smartphones during school hours. And the implementation date is a policy to be in place by July 1 of 2026. The law also says that it requires significant stakeholder participation in developing the policy. And once the policy is board-approved, the policy must be reviewed every five years, using those same conditions, working with the community. The exceptions, or maybe not the exceptions, but part of the elements of the law require us to ensure that if there are special education students who need to use a phone as part of their IEP or their learning process, that our policy would not prohibit that, that the phones be made available in, to the students, back to the students in emergency situations. And third, if there is a doctor's note that necessitates any student having to have their phone with them 24/7, such as the students who are diabetic that may need tracking of their, of their blood levels. So once the governor signs the bill, obviously, as a, as a staff, cabinet staff will review it, will start to work with the board to see how we roll it out and how we work the community to get that input. So the question was asked, what is our current policy in the district? And I will share this. I'll put it in the Friday update. We have Board Policy 5131, and it's actually titled just Conduct. And within conduct policy, first, it loosely speaks about cyberbullying to make sure that our environments and school environments are cyberbully-free, which includes social media, kids using social platforms to bully. But also in that policy, there's a section that's titled Possession of Cell Phones and Other Mobile Communication Devices. And as Felicia had mentioned, right now, the implementation of the policy is really is the teacher mandating how it's going to be used in the classroom. Although upon looking at our policy, the policy reads as follows. Students are permitted to possess cellular phones for use before school and after the instructional day. The policy currently states, students must keep their cellular phones with the power off and out of sight during the instructional day. Students are prohibited from using cellular phones at schools as recording devices and/or cameras. So this board policy, which it doesn't have a date to when it was written, 2019 was the last time it was updated. So it has some pretty strict language already, but the application has been more teacher by teacher, school side by school side. So obviously, with the law coming down, that'll help us to be a little more consistent. So once that comes down the pipe, board, I'll certainly keep everybody informed. So thank you for asking that question. And as we know, we've asked our student board members, once that, that law is passed, to kind of kick the policy around and, and see how you believe it should be best used and utilized. If we do have some sort of extreme application of policy, there will be some costs involved behind that, you know, in terms of any of the pouches or the lockup lockers that they have. But certainly, we'll cross that desk once we've had time to talk about it. So thank you for that. Next slide. Then I know the question came up about AB 2158, which is a law that went into place that now requires school board members to participate in the board ethics training. So that law goes into effect January 1, 2025. All board members must do this training every two years. The training is two hours in length. It specifically speaks to the conflict of interest laws. And what will happen in the law is, once you've taken this training, and I'll get to how to get to that training, you'll be issued a certificate. The certificate must be kept in file at the district level for five years, and the certificate must say the date of the training and the organization from which you received that training. We know at this point that CSBA, the California School Boards Association, does have a training that's been approved. It's a cost of $175 to access that training. They have a, it's a virtual training. I'm sure law firms are going to start to get their programs approved, so. there will be some costs involved behind that, you know, in terms of any of the pouches or the lockup lockers that they have. But certainly we'll cross that desk once we've had time to talk about it. So thank you for that. Next slide. Then I know the question came up about AB 2158, which is a law that went into place that now requires school board members to participate in the board ethics training. So that law goes into effect January 1st, 2025. All board members must do this training every two years. The training is two hours in length. It specifically speaks to the conflict of interest laws. And what will happen in the law is, once you've taken this training, and I'll get to how to get to that training, you'll be issued a certificate. The certificate must be kept in file at the district level for five years. And the certificate must say the date of the training and the organization from which you received that training. We know at this point that CSBA, the California School Boards Association, does have a training that's been approved. It's a cost of $175 to access that training. They have a, it's a virtual training. I'm sure law firms are going to start to get their programs approved. So as those different options start to get approved, we will share those with you. I believe, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, the CSBA training is already available? Is that correct? So if the board members so wish to sign up for the CSBA, we're good to go? Okay, all right, so I'll stop there. Next slide. So I just want to continue to share some of the great things that I'm seeing as I do school visits. This past week, I had the opportunity to visit San Gregonia High School, Cypress Elementary, and Bing Huang Elementary. And you'll see the top two pictures, and this doesn't even do it justice, guys. The culinary building at San G is just off the hook. I mean, that's the best way to explain it. You see the pictures there, but it looks like a university building. I'm going to work to see if we can maybe put a tour together of some of these new facilities so that the board has an opportunity to look. But the, the culinary building, what Tom Pace and your team did, Terry, incredible. So thank you for that. Then right below is an example of how we are continuing to reimagine the elementary library. So that is the new elementary library at Cypress Elementary School. You'll see the new flexible seating, a little more modern book shelving, some of the murals. So they've done a really nice job, and the campus looked fantastic. And then the picture there of this young man, I, I wanted to share that Bing Huang. He had a little suitcase, a little case of lollipops. And he walked up to Dr. Funches and I, and he said that his job for the day was to spread kindness across the school site. And so he was handing out lollipops. Yeah, so I just thought that was just wonderful. They're, they're hearing the message, so that was great. Now, I did have to admonish Dr. Funches because he immediately put the lollipop in his mouth. And there's no candy to be eaten at school, right, Dr. Funches? But I did ask him, was it good? And he said, yeah, it was. So we enjoyed it. But that, that was really, that was a nice, nice moment. Next slide. I, I want to give kudos to Dr. Will Greer. Cabinet and directors had the opportunity to be a part of his four-day training, gap closing, a brain-based approach, African student achievement. And let me tell you, what Dr. Greer has put together is just an amazing program. I was so happy and blessed to attend those four days of training. So it was Thursday, Friday of one week, Thursday, Friday of another. And I've made a commitment to Dr. Greer that I'd like to work with our teachers to make sure, and our principals, to make sure that this is a mandatory training. The research, the strategies, the applications that, that, that Mr., that Dr. Greer has put together is amazing. And it's not just good for African-American kids, it's good for all kids. So I just want to thank Dr. Greer for just an amazing four days and give him some kudos because he's put a lot of hard work behind this training. And I want to thank Mary Ellen, she came the first part of the training. And Felicia, I appreciate you coming by, saying some words of encouragement on the last day. It means a lot to Dr. Greer and our staff to see our members there and really appreciating the hard work they're doing. So thank you, Dr. Greer, for a great four days. Next slide. And this is a shout out to Alicia Torres, teacher at Cypress Elementary. When I went into her classroom, she handed me this mug that says, are you from San Bernardino? You darn right. And as you know, that was a statement I made not only at graduations, but also at the teacher welcome back. So she gave me that mug. So I'm, I'm glad that the people are really building on our SBCUSD pride here in the district. So Alicia, thank you very much for the thermos. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ariano. And Section 14, Summary of Ball Requests, 14.1 Review of Requests.
Good evening. The first request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She requested to have a land acknowledgement and recognition of the California Native American Day. President Tillman stated, we will look into it. The second request is from President Tillman. He requested for the Special Ed Department to have the list of languages forwarded and how we provide the primary assessment via the Friday update. The third request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She requested an update slash presentation on the GATE program. The next request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She requested to include GATE in the interdepartmental collaboration to make sure they are engaged. The next request is from Mrs. Chahusky. She asked if a student can participate in a pathway in fine arts. This next request is from Mrs. Grande. She asked Mrs. Applegate and Dr. Rubio to bring back the distinction of being an official site for the Special Olympics. And the last request is from Mrs. Alexander and President Tillman, requested for the board to get a copy of the cellphone policy. Thank you.
Ms. Chahusky?
I didn't hear the one about the pathway and the RCS. I just want to make sure it gets documented. About the data, about the request of change of schools. I just want to make sure that that data, that request gets captured so we don't lose it. The data on requests for pathways, on the request for change of school and the pathways. So looking at the students who may have requested a change of school because they want a pathway, who, who got to move for their pathway, who didn't get to move for their pathway, and then how that relates to the low numbers that may possibly be.
Ms. Abios?
And just for me as well. I had asked if we can include a way, or we can just opt students in to be universally tested instead of sending out permission slips for them to opt in? If we could just automatically opt in and then have them opt out if they choose not to participate? That was one of the requests. And then the, the other ones were on the Friday update. So just differentiating between the reclassification by level, so elementary, middle, and high school. And then also some data this year, maybe even last year, on the percentage of third graders that have opted in for GATE testing. Thank you.
And then we have 15.1 in memoriam. And I like to read the one from Ms. Vasti Margie Dowdy. Mrs. Dowdy, I remember my whole life, when I was a kid, my mother didn't drive. And Ms. Dowdy would give my mother rides to either work or to the store and those type of things. So I have wonderful memories about Mrs. Dowdy. She's just a beautiful woman her whole life. Vasti Margie Dowdy, the mother of former board member Gwyneth Dowdy Rogers, passed away on August 10th, 2024 at the age of 88. She and her husband Ernest moved from Arkansas to Richmond, California in 1955, finally settling in San Bernardino in 1961, where they raised three boys and one girl. During the early 1970s, Vasti worked for the district as an attendance clerk and an instructional aide. She later worked for San Bernardino Signified School District as a lead, no, the city of San Bernardino, as a lead supervisor and retired after 30 years of dedicated service with the city. She will be greatly missed by her family, church friends, and community. Her celebration of life will be held on September 5th at 11 o'clock AM at the Church of the Living God in Highland. We also are recognizing Robert Bob Kiesel, who worked for the district's Maintenance and Operations Department for 37 years. He started his career with the district in 1972 as an assistant electrician. In 1987, Bob promoted to an electrician position. And in 2023, he became the lead electrician, a position he held until his retirement in 2009. Bob was a dedicated, hard-working employee and will be missed by all of those who knew him. Moment of silence for both, please? Thank you very much. And a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Leading adjourn.